Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Committee of the Whole for February 19th. Haflan Squamish, Pies Toulukma, Plaas Koahomish, Goyamayor. Welcome to the Squamish Nation Traditional Territory. Motion to adopt the agenda. Moved by Councilor Stoner, seconded by Councilor Hurford. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Right? Now we totally get to switch hats about rental zoning. Matt, I've seen you taking on all the least controversial projects this year. Zoning bylaw rewrite?
No problem.
Rental zoning?
I don't think that has zoning yet. Did I draw the shorts drawn or the longs drawn?
I don't know. I don't know. I guess we'll have to see at the end of the year how you feel about that.
If I'm still around?
That's not a funny joke, is it?
I just gotta try not to make mistakes. You just never know, right?
Okay, so, Mr. Gunn, we may have council members that are in potential conflict on some of the properties you mentioned in your report. So I'd like to have a very general conversation about the pros and cons of going in this direction with residential rental tenure zoning. If we are going to start to talk about specific parcels, we should do them one by one, not as a group. Because I don't know where people might have those conflicts, but they may just want to discuss.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there is one segment of this presentation where I talk about the properties that are part of a staff proposal. And I don't talk really specifically about the properties, just I assume it shows the addresses, a map that shows where they're located, and that's about it. Does that seem like that fits that criteria? Or is that going to be too specific?
Ms. Arthurs?
For me?
Do you want me to ask around, see if there's any conflicts before we go any further? Or can we have this general? Can Matt show his table with the addresses in it?
With addresses with no meetings of...
If we don't discuss them specifically?
I pulled out any need of...
If there's references to particular addresses that are being zoned, then that's a conflict.
Council, did we have a conflict on the properties that were mentioned in this report? What's on Hurford?
One of the addresses in this report, I have a business that occupies some of that space as well, so I have a joint landlord with the residential component, so I suppose that's... Possible perception of bias, so...
So I think...
I was...
Go ahead.
As it's a conversation that applies to a broader range of the whole district, I was trying to find a way to separate the two pieces where we can discuss whether we're going to entertain the rental zoning bylaw in general and then the discussion of including or excluding specific properties, if that could happen separately. Because I do believe on a list of properties, there's probably things to be said about each one. Now whether that's, whether we're able to do that with the presentation as it currently stands, or whether we have to refer this so we can do it, I'm not sure how to best to proceed, but on that one topic.
So there's only two places where I talk about specific properties, and so I can skip over that, and we can talk about everything. And then if council, mainly those were included so that council had a sense of what properties we were talking about, and I could leave that to the end. And if council is interested in seeing the properties we're talking about, we could pull that up for that, for a brief portion. May I address that issue?
Comfortable with that? Council? So if you're asking questions of Matt, please don't refer to specific properties. Let's keep the conversation strategic about the pluses and minuses of going in this direction. And if we want to talk about specific properties at the end, council member can recuse himself from that part of the discussion.
Okay, thank you. So greetings, council and community. My name is Matt Gunn. I'm a planner here at the District of Squamish. Today, we're speaking to council about a proposed update to the District of Squamish zoning bylaw regarding new authority given to us by the province. In May of last year, the province passed Bill 23, the Local Government Statutes Residential Rental Tenure Zoning Amendment Act. And it's a bit of a multiple, so I'm going to talk about rental zoning, but when I am saying rental zoning, I'm referring to residential rental tenure zoning. This is a new authority. It provides local government the authority to preserve and increase the overall supply of rental housing. For multifamily residential properties, local government can require that new housing be developed as rental units and ensure that existing areas of rental housing are preserved as such. Also, local government can restrict the form of tenure of housing units for different zones and locations within a zone, but it is specific to multifamily. Prior to and after adoption of Bill 23, the previous council directed staff to prepare and implement rental zoning once possible. The objective of today's report is to obtain council direction on the use of this new authority. Staff have considered four options, which I will present to you. Option one is to apply rental tenure zoning to new developments with purpose-built rental, likely in combination with housing agreements. Rental tenure has several benefits over housing agreements which have been used in the past. It can be structured in combination with municipal ticketing authority. This could make it relatively straightforward to initiate enforcement if there is noncompliance. Rental tenure zoning is at full discretion of council. It may be slightly more robust because a public hearing would be required to remove rental requirements. Zoning is easier to track over time. What is best practice, or while it is best practice to register housing agreements on title, this is not a requirement. And finally, it is assumed that zoning is better understood by the public than housing agreements, and the information is more accessible. However, housing agreements have advantages in that they can stipulate the intended occupants, the administration of the units, rent controls, and stratification limits. Therefore, a combination of the two options could be a useful approach to use. Option two is the option that is recommended by staff in this report to council for potential use of this new authority. To preserve existing rental stock, residential rental tenure, sorry, rental tenure zoning can be applied to existing purpose-built rental buildings. This could ensure that no rental units in these buildings are lost through tenure changes or redevelopment in the future. The rental tenure zoning could specify that the entire property maintain rental tenure or that a specified portion or a number of the units maintain rental tenure. Mandating a portion of rental tenure units could support redevelopment over time by enabling redevelopment of some market housing. And this is one of the concepts that we're trying to struggle with. How can we ensure that if we do apply these two properties, that there is a possibility that they could see renewal over time? And this balance of just trying to protect the existing rental units is one that may allow that, but still preserve the units. Option three is to apply rental tenure zoning to existing purpose-built rental units with housing agreements. Housing agreements have been used in Squamish to secure purpose-built rental units. Rental zoning could be applied to these units as an additional layer of security for rental unit preservation. The approach would likely provide limited benefits beyond the status quo, and they would unilaterally extend the expected expiry dates on these agreements, or could unilaterally extend that. And so, staff doesn't see that as a fantastic approach. And then option four is to apply residential rental zoning to undeveloped properties. Undeveloped land could be rezoned to mandate rental tenure in any future development. However, selection of these properties can be challenging and would likely raise concerns from the landowners. It might be an approach that's appropriate for public lands, but has some challenges with private lands. There are some risks associated with the use of this authority. This is a new authority. It is, as far as we can tell, and as far as any of the research has shown, it's not an authority that exists elsewhere in North America. So the risks and benefits of using this aren't well-understood, and there aren't any established best practices. The use of this would really, in a lot of ways, be an untested endeavor. Owners and representatives of rental properties have shared several concerns as we've reached out or done research on other communities that have engaged in using this authority. Some of the concerns that have been raised are that zoning might make it economically challenging to redevelop rental properties, unless you could have declining quality of stock over time. The use of this authority could lead to a lack of investment in rental over time, as landowners have hesitancy because of the restrictions. The zoning could make development of new rental undesirable due to that loss of future flexibility. The zoning could create uncertainty and loss of confidence from developers. Changes in zoning that have impacts on development opportunities can affect confidence from the development community. And it was highlighted that the stable land values are really critical for the development community over time for financing reasons. And this is particular for rental, where there's quite a long timeframe for cost recovery. So their concerns have been identified from landowners and developers. There are also some risks associated with the creation of non-conforming uses by applying these to existing properties. Application of rental zoning to owner-occupied properties could result in the creation of these non-conformances. This issue would be probably most likely in any strata buildings where there was rental occurring, but could be some owner occupation or co-op properties. The owner-occupied land use would be protected by the Local Government Act as a non-conforming use, but that does create some challenges for the owners, particularly in situations where there is some significant damage to the property. And then, because these new powers have not seen long-term use, there is the possibility of unanticipated and unintended consequences. And so, there's Andy Yan, who's a professor in the Lower Mainland, has a couple good quotes. "The second mouse gets the cheese" was one that I thought was relevant. So we take risks, we move quickly, but the power is there to use. Oop, oh, don't close your eyes. There we go.
Nobody saw that?
Nobody saw that. But the recommended approach by staff is to apply residential tenure, so what's on the screen is not what I'm speaking to. There was some interlay of the properties and what I'm speaking to now. But the recommended approach by staff is to apply residential rental tenure to existing purpose-built rental buildings. That was option two. Specifically, the buildings which are neither strata nor co-op to try and avoid some of that challenge with creating non-conforming uses. And also, buildings that have six or more units. The six, although that's a slightly arbitrary number, it was chosen as an attempt to try and mitigate some of the challenges. One, there's going to be more chances of owner occupations, units with smaller numbers. And two, on smaller properties, there's going to be less opportunity for redevelopment in the future, where there could be a mix of rental and strata. And so, the thought was by going with slightly larger buildings, we kind of avoid one of the problems of non-conforming uses and preserve some opportunity for redevelopment and renewal of properties. And so, yeah, so the option is to look at those properties and change the zoning so that the existing number of rental units are preserved in perpetuity for future development. So if they get redeveloped, that number of rental units have to be replaced. Using that criteria, I won't speak how many units that covers, but I'll speak to that later. But the intention of this is really to preserve rental stock in Squamish's ongoing tight rental market and to strike a balance that will support the renewal of rental stock over time, enabling some strata to be added, some strata, market housing to be added to the redevelopment of a rental building could enable the renewal of that building and fund the redevelopment of purpose-built rental in that area. One other advantage of using this approach is that it would create a definition for residential rental tenure zoning, which could be applied to purpose-built rental in the future, if that's something that council is interested in. As part of this approach, and we're back to this slide, staff recommend the creation of accompanying OCP policy. And this is really trying to balance some of these impacts. In particular, landowners, who we've talked to about this potential approach, highlighted that they felt that this would remove some value from land and could have impacts on their ability to redevelop. And one of the requests was that if there was this potential loss of development opportunity, that they felt it would be appropriate to have something provided to them in exchange. Often, that was related to increase in floor ratio density or height, something that could offset the costs. So staff felt that that could potentially be quite a challenging negotiation or discussion to engage in at this point, that they're really context-specific, and the thought of just going in and starting to change zoning to provide this increased density might be really inappropriate at this point. But one potential balance would be to do some changes to the OCP that specifically named any property that did get residential tenure zoning applied to them and provide a policy that said additional density would be considered in the future as part of any rezoning application in light of the impacts from that rental tenure restriction. That would reflect the interest of the landowners in some of the requests that they had made. And it would inform staff discussion with development that would occur with those landowners and probably inform the recommendation council, but wouldn't fetter any future council decision-making. Another policy addition that would be recommended as part of that approach would be to apply rental tenure zoning to any new purpose-built rental developed in the future, as well as policy that supported review of impacts of rental tenure zoning over time to respond to any unintended consequences. Now, the other piece of this that I want to talk about will be in respect to specific properties.
Okay, so let's stop there. We'll put in a order of questions. Council, Arthurs?
Thank you. You've been speaking about this in the report, spoke more mostly in unit numbers. And some of the... But if there was, say, somewhere that had hypothetically 10 units at 1,000 square feet, which would be spacious pieces, would we be looking at a similar square, speak about it in square footage, like, so we're going to come back with 20 500-square-foot units if, you know, if the property was to be redeveloped, and that would cover it off, or are they coming back at 10 500-square-foot units? There's now actually reductions sort of in the available rental square footage, or whether you can talk about it, number of bedrooms, or whatever. Do you follow my...
Absolutely.
...where I'm going there?
Through you, Mayor. Yeah, so the legislation that the province put forward is very flexible. It can be used by local government in however way it sees fit. And so, if this council is interested in pursuing this, they could create requirements for number of units or proportion of the building or the size. All of those could be addressed. In preparing the staff report, the recommendation that staff came up with was strictly around the number of units, thinking that there should be some flexibility to try and maximize that ability for redevelopment over time. But adding in requirements for size of units is certainly within the scope of the legislation.
Paul, Frank, good.
I'm just, I'm honestly weighing out the best way to speak about that, because protecting the square footage of available rentals, however you divide that up, is different than providing this, protecting 10 units that are now actually reducing the number of units.
If I may, through Mayor, we could do a general analysis of what the likely square footages are in each development, and then maybe just describe an average minimum square footage, so that you could get a range, but not everybody would have to be the same.
This goes to the image with the mouse there in the helmet, to make sure that we're protecting the overall square footage of available rentals. We might actually be able to increase the units, given that it seems that new developments are more efficient with space, and we may actually have a net increase there if we do it from a square footage standpoint. That'd be good to assess it, so that's good for me right now.
Thank you. Council, Ritz?
Thank you. I haven't read the legislation, but the provincial legislation, but is there a definition of owner? Would they say who you can rent to or cannot rent to? And for example, if a company owned one of these units, could they rent it to a principal of that company, might be a one-person company, for example, to get around the owner not actually being able to live there? I was just rattling through a whole bunch of scenarios, and there's all kinds of ways you can get around this kind of stuff with trust agreements and corporate relatives owning it and things like that. And then lose, perhaps, the principal residence exemption and accept that the Canada New Agency taxes beneficial interest and legal interest, so you might even get that, be able to hold on to that. So enforcement was the thing that sort of, no matter what way we go, was the thing that really struck me as perhaps a problem over time. It's one thing to do a VC online search and find out who the title holder is, but that doesn't necessarily tell you who's occupying the unit and what's behind the title holder, whether they're in trust or whatever. So I was just curious if we had, if there's anything in the legislation that helped with that.
Through you, Mayor. I think you've probably touched on some items that I don't have enough knowledge on to speak to, but I'll do my best with what I know. One of the elements about this legislation is that they leave it to local government to define residential rental tenure. So it's within our discretion to lay out what we see that as being, and maybe that provides an avenue for us to be more specific about things that we don't want to see. But I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that is something that, because it's, we're getting into the user, if that becomes one of those use versus user issues, I don't, I'm not aware of that. In terms of enforcement, we could, we could use, it could be tied in with ticketing to provide us an avenue for trying to do enforcement, but in terms of monitoring and when we would initiate that, I would likely fall under a normal enforcement program where we wait for a complaint before we initiate it. So that, there is probably some possibility that that could get abused, and if we don't put resources to that monitoring, that may be a challenge.
It is a bigger discussion, for sure. But the other thing that struck me is that, is the restriction, if we're going to have a policy, we might want to restrict stratification. And I know that's a challenge, because I know it's changed in the tenure, that I have a practice, but banks like to see these units stratified, even if the developer intends to rent them, just because if they have to propose, it's easier for them to dispose of stratified units as opposed to the whole building. And so, there are challenges, finance, and I know that, we're not Mr. Modo, there's certainly our challenges. And so, it occurred to me that one of the things, but on the other hand, if you get individual units, that's the thing where you can have the scenario that I was just talking about, where somebody buys it and sticks it in the company and basically moves into their own unit, which defeats the purpose of our bylaws. And so, you might consider a restriction on individual stratification. And maybe it's, you know, you can have a minimum of four units, you can create a strata lot, because you don't have to re-stratify a building, you don't have to stratify it on a particular dwelling there. You can have a clump of a whole floor, for example, with six units, and it could be one strata lot. And that might get away from someone trying to abuse it. Now you've got a true investor situation when you have these clumps. So I'll leave you with that thought as well, that there might be some restriction, as opposed to saying you can't stratify the building at all, which just makes it that much tougher. But there might be a sort of a middle ground in that.
Through you, Mayor. As far as I know, there's not yet a clarity around whether the zoning bylaw could have provisions around non-stratification. So I think unfortunately, there is not a lot of zone or jurisdictions that have gone that way yet, and there's no legal challenges to this. And I think, from what I understand, the stratification is still a question mark, whether a zoning bylaw could dictate it.
But on a rezoning, if one of these comes as a new project, then we can dictate it?
For sure. I think our recommendation is to continue having housing agreements in place as well as the zoning, because there's, you know, we understand a lot more about housing agreements, and you can put a lot more provisions in it for monitoring and reporting that you can do for the zoning bylaw. But this is specific to the, our recommendation is specific to securing these existing buildings.
Okay. Count, if you can go. And then, does anybody else, because I see your hand again, but does anybody else want to speak for the first time? All right, good point. So, Count, I'm putting myself on my list, and then I'll come back to you.
So one thing I'm not clear about, are we confident that we'd be able to preclude short-term rental from this sort of thing, or...
Yes. We can. It's, again, an enforcement issue. So we can, the zoning is intended to prevent basically owners living in the units or the rental units, and then it's up to the district whether we allow short-term rentals in those types of occupancies.
Through you, Mayor. But to be clear, on this project, because there's an ongoing short-term rental zoning project undergoing, being underway right now, with this one, we tried to avoid getting into that and allowed that one to establish the regulations that would apply to any type of unit, including these tenures.
So you mentioned possible impacts and consequences and risks. Were you speaking more to social, economic risks? Are you thinking there's a high probability of a successful legal challenge, and rather than the province, we might be the ones that have to bear the brunt of that?
Through you, Mayor. I was not speaking to risks that I thought we might face from challenge from landowners. The legislation seems pretty clear that they have given us, the province has given local government authority to implement this, and what has been proposed, I think, is fully within the new authority that we've been given. That's not the risk. I think the risk is more on policy. You know, what are the implications for development, social? Are we going to achieve what we want in terms of having more rental, or is this going to have some unintended kind of effect on future development or rental? Really more outside of our legal risk and more around, does it meet the goals we're trying to achieve?
Keep going.
So there was a lot of discussion about the possible impacts on the developer community and possible intensive engagement, or thorough engagement with the developer community and so on. And I guess, from my perspective, I philosophically feel that have a primary responsibility to the citizens, their housing affordability, quality of life, and so on. And so, I was trying to reconcile the amount of resource and attention to developers and to investors, land speculation, as opposed to the average citizen, and sort of thinking, you know, if the developer's going to have a lot of resources to engage as well, and the average person who's struggling to go afford the rent, it's going to already have a challenge talking with us. So just wondering if you can speak to the balance and why we think you have it right, or why we want to change that?
Sure. Through you, Mayor. And just to clarify, are you speaking in specific to the report and what has been done leading up to this report?
The report and also the concern about finding accommodation for developers was supposed to say, well, you know what, maybe this will help moderate property values and housing prices, maybe slow down development. We've heard a lot of people say they'd like to see development slow down, and so, you know, let's zone lots of stuff rental, and, you know, maybe we don't need to worry as much that some developers might be negatively affected.
Yeah, fair enough. Yeah, so, good question. I think in preparing this report, it was a bit of an unusual approach to come to council with already having done a bit of engagement. And it was mainly because in the past, when we had gotten direction from it, from the previous council, there was a suggestion that we should, you know, move along and have something that we could apply fairly quickly. And so, when I came to council, I wanted to at least have a bit more background about how the highly affected, and sometimes we get the biggest response from those who are most impacted. And I think in this situation, that is the group that would be the most highly affected. So I wanted to be able to at least bring forward some of the comments, so there weren't big surprises or people showing up at council frustrated, having been caught off guard. Certainly, it would be good to have a broader discussion, and if council is interested in moving forward, it would go through the normal legislated bylaw adoption process. And so, there would be the opportunity to put something in the paper or put out, you know, some, put out a notice for a public hearing. So there would be some engagement there. It's a bit harder to get really specific with individuals on something that's fairly broad and, you know, to the public tends to engage in stuff that they're a little bit closer to. So I think this might, it was something that might have been hard for me to tackle, to do broad engagement at this stage, but if council's interested in broad engagement, we could certainly try and do that, either as part of the regular adoption process or something more involved.
If I may add to that, through you, Mayor. The, I think it's important to understand where it came from. It came from a meeting back in September with the previous council, and discussion was around existing rental properties. was around existing rental properties and how do we protect those from redevelopment? So our response was to propose a very quick sort of process, let's protect the existing rental. And I think we can continue considering and engaging on, you know, whether we want to zone vacant land or other properties through the zoning bylaw update. This was meant to be a quick and dirty essential fix.
I know the report mentions that you touched base with City of Victoria and we're expecting the province to provide a bit more guidance. Do we have any sense of when that's coming up?
I do not have that information. And there's also in that-
UBC statement?
Yeah, UBC SCARP was going, this is from University of Victoria, they said they were engaging in something. And those would be great pieces to inform information, but I wasn't able to find more information about timelines with that information available.
So I guess my other question is that my understanding of giving municipalities the ability to do this was actually to preserve older rental stock in some respects while also planning ahead to secure future rental stock. So one of the things I'm concerned about is that if we, if we zone in this direction the current stock, but we allow for redevelopment through a change in OCP policy, we may encourage gentrification faster than we want. So one of the bigger complaints I've heard in other municipalities is that we're losing the older rental stock, which tends to be cheaper. And so, yep, you know, they get first rate of refusal in a new building, but to Council Herford's point, the units are smaller, the price goes up because they're new. And we still find people now leaving our communities because they can't afford a home there. So one of the things I'm concerned about is if we, we zone for this but allow for development, we risk increasing the pace of development rather than holding, staying for time. Is that considered?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a, it's a good point. I think the balance of that is that the only, the only element that would give the indication that there might be a possibility for more density would be OCP policy that would guide discussion probably at the staff level, but would still remain completely at council's discretion. It wouldn't, it would not miss staff to anything that, or commit council to any particular decision. And that policy is not any kind of requirement of the district implementing this zoning. If council does have that concern, that policy does not have to be part of this program. But it is probably one of the pieces that might make it more palatable and, you know, depending on your level of concern with the impacts on development, you may or may not worry about including that or not.
I guess my follow-up to that then is, in, to Council Herford's thing about square footage and people losing the size of the unit they're used to, does this legislation allow us to dictate cost? Because basically we become renovation people.
Legislation does not provide opportunity to mandate or to control cost.
But through our housing agreements, when we do rezonings, we do.
Different authority, different opportunity.
So this is where I hesitate about this new power is that in the mouse who gets the cheese second is, is I'm worried that we'll actually accelerate gentrification of our older housing stock at the same time that we're trying to protect it. So that's one thing to consider. And the other is, we had our MP in here the other day and she was talking about the federal government really wanting to be part of this solution for rental housing. And I wonder if we could have a conversation through her office with the folks that are providing that funding for rental housing to see how they're reacting to this new power in VC municipalities? Because if there's a way to protect the rental rates of current tenants and encourage development, I'd be interested to see if the federal government wants to come to the table on that. And she said they're kind of waiting for municipalities to come to them and sort of show them what they need in order to make purpose-built rental happen. And I wonder if that's a conversation that we could help broker in. Just give us another piece of the puzzle here, because it's so new. So I'll see that.
I just want to respond to one of the items, the first part of that item that you mentioned. The, if, if there's a concern around encouraging gentrification, the only piece of what has been discussed that would be part of that is the OCP policy that would provide some exchange for the impact of putting them in residential rental tenure. That, that's the kind of the trade-off that was contemplated to try and mitigate, you know, frustration and outrage. Without that piece, then the only thing that would be undertaken as part of option two would be to say, whatever you do, you have to replace this rental stock. And so you're constraining options. And so I don't see that as having any kind of gentrification. I don't think that would incur gentrification. I think it may not have an impact if, if the owner is actually thinking, hey, I want to redevelop and make purpose-built rental. Probably is neither here nor there. But if that landowner was thinking, I've got an opportunity to redevelop this old property and make a bunch of money, you're going to start constraining their opportunities and it wouldn't encourage, in my opinion, encourage gentrification. Does that make sense?
Only if through that rezoning to see development, like market development with rental in, we can put in a housing agreement to protect the rights of the tenants currently there.
No, I'm just meaning if we did this, with this approach, this wouldn't encourage them to go do a rezoning. We'd actually be taking on a rezoning and just constraining their options. You're right, if you, if we wanted to maintain a certain price in the future as they did redevelopment and adding, housing agreement might do that. But this action alone wouldn't, wouldn't spark their interest. It would actually reduce potentially or limit options for that interest.
I'm wary of too, and also we don't want to end up with like Darrell building-
That's the exact-
-and totally constrain their development ways. Council Herford and then Council Raisin.
Thank you. Presentation, you mentioned the ticketing as one of the sort of selling features of this. And I'm curious about, has compliance with their housing agreements been an issue? And we were seeking to have more, more power to enforce that? Or is that just an interesting talking point about it or assessment of, you know?
Hi. Through you, Mayor. I put it in there as kind of an interesting piece, trying to understand what, what the pros and cons are of this. It wasn't from a place of, oh, we've got a problem, how can we fix that? It was more, what are the pros and cons of using this? But I'm going to let, maybe am I wrong on that? Is there a problem with enforcement happening?
No, there's not, not a problem. And we don't have a lot of housing agreements.
I just wanted to understand that piece of what you're-
It's just, the housing agreement's through, likely through broadening of confidence, through injunctive relief. So you've got to go to court really to get that thing. You could threaten, send letters from a lawyer. With ticketing, we can issue tickets on a daily basis. And so the penalty is financial, so it's less onus than having to, or it's more immediate than having to. It's just a different way of addressing the infringement.
If the short-term rental pieces are committed, committed by, like in this actual letter of situation?
If the short-term rental bylaw has the same ticketing.
So one, two more, Tom. So if one of these, if a property was zoned under this new, this new zoning and we wanted to do a redevelopment, they could come forward with, with a proposal that contains some variances to any piece, any piece of the dislot, sort of more or less rental or some different consideration, whether it's density or some other components of the nearby as well, just sort of brings, could potentially just frame the conversation when we go to do, to do something, to engage.
Through you, Mayor. Yes, exactly. It would establish a new baseline that when they approach us, their baseline is they have to have this much rental in the property. If, for example, they thought, no, I want to actually create a different, you know, format here, maybe higher or whatnot, they'd be coming in for a rezoning and the conversation at the staff level would start as, okay, so you need to have this many zoning, or this many rental units. Now whatever you want to add on is on top of that, but we would assume that would be the base. They would, as part of a zoning application, always be able to ask for whatever they're interested in. They could say, hey, we want to rezone to eliminate all, all the rental and do full strata or whatnot. But that would be a decision that was at the discretion of council as to whether or not that was accepted.
And then, so, so with that, the square footage I mentioned earlier, goes, goes both ways. Because we could have a building that has all the studios and, and if we said that they're maybe to require the same number of units, it may actually come back as something better to us that we find more appealing or fits the demand of the, of the community where maybe we want it. Maybe there's a shortage in our sort of spectrum and we need to see, we prefer a two-bedroom rental units at whatever the given time is and I want to make sure that flexibility's in there, which may also help with that development piece. Now, of course, it's important to make sure that the pricing, I mean, it's a complex, a complex problem, but we'll make sure that we capture that there's a bit of give and take with, with both the units and the square footage that they're, that they sort of, those two things interact.
Through you, Mayor. I suspect that we, we may be able to entertain some of the changes through, let's say, a development permit process with variances, but I think any significant changes or departures from, you know, let's say, the number of units that have to be rented might have to actually go through the, a rezoning process. So there is an option that's just a little more difficult.
Yeah. Through you, Mayor. The legislation, I'm pretty sure I'd have to go back and look at it, but I think it actually has put rental tenure as one of the things that can't be varied, that it has to be dealt with, some provisions that would need to be dealt with through rezoning. So it's, you know, it's not a variance option, like using density.
Thank you. Council Raisin.
Thank you. So, so with new construction, that's a rezoning typically. And so we can just basically do what we want with that. We can have a mix, we can have all kinds of different things just to make it what we want it to be. So the problem is with the existing stock. My guess is, and I don't really know, that most redevelopment of existing stock would also include a rezoning. We try to somehow increase density because of old standards, we can add a couple more floors, et cetera. And so that creates a discussion right there. But we could, you know, to give everybody an idea of our expectations, we could talk about, to the mayor's point, of providing a like amount of similar rental accommodation as kind of a baseline at a similar price. We could dictate and control the price and like we do in New York City. I know that because I watch Seinfeld episodes. Comes on once in a while. So, so we could, you know, to, to avoid the next unit because it's new being more costly, dictate, no, it's going to be the same as it used to be. And to make that profitable for development, we put in some market units in development. We can make that work, I think, if we just apply that kind of thinking and flexibility and just control it for some period of time, for some transition period so that the tenants aren't more or less forced out of town. So I think there's a lot of flexibility there. And so to me, to go into an existing building, wherever they are, and say, okay, now it's rented, it's going to be rented. The owners of that building, if we're going to do anything with it, because we don't want the building to just fall down around them, they've got to be able to reinvest in it and refurbish it, and that takes money. And if they just carry on and they don't create a new building or rezone, then they can do that in the normal course and they'll recover their investment through rentals. But it's where they try to really expand, blow the old building up and put it in a tower, which we see happen in all the lower mainland, that's when we want the discussion. And that's when we want them to understand, and maybe it's just an OCP statement, we want them to understand that we have to have at least what we have in rental stock now of a similar quality and kind or similar, similar size and mix and so forth. So they understand, and also similar rental. So they understand what's coming. And then they can just create their own business case to do it and say, yeah, okay, if we want that, then I need three floors of market, market that we sell to make those types of things actually work. So I think there's a lot of ways we can deal with it. It's a matter of controlling that process, but I would guess that most of those buildings, when there's something going to happen significantly, will involve some of their rezoning, would you be able to?
Yes, in most cases. It's possible that somebody will come along, because these buildings are, a lot of them are zoned multiple residential, so go to the higher density zones. It's possible that somebody could come along and redevelop through a development permit process to the same density, especially if the density has been maximized on the property. But yes, it's likely though, these, some of these are going to be rezonings, in which case we have full discretion.
Well, we'd need some by the zoning now-
Yes.
-so that they didn't, because the problem is then we get back to the stratification.
Yeah.
And if they took a building that was not stratified today and they tore it down and rebuilt the same building, now it's new construction, we don't have a say in stratification.
Yeah. Yeah, that is the benefit of the option two proposed, that, because if they were happy to build within their existing zone, RM, some of them are RM2, or, you know, if they had a zone that was, provided enough development opportunity and they thought they could make some nice units and sell those stratified, that's where we potentially lose rental stock.
Council Stoner?
Just feeling off what Council Raisin was speaking to, and I don't want to get into the details of a specific company, but it might be helpful in understanding of what they are currently zoned and the likelihood of rezoning based on what they currently sit at. And that piece I'm curious about was if that you put a CAC policy policy in place versus what the risk is of weekend testing.
So if we're going to talk about the zoning, then we should allow Council to recuse himself?
Right.
That's been a potential conflict on one of the drop pieces.
Thank you, Council Stoner. Now I can speak freely.
Okay. So there's a few more slides I'd like to show. So when we came up with the potential approach, trying to balance some of these different variables, using the criteria that I came up with, I went around the community and tried to identify all of the properties that fit into that category. There are 12. They represent 309 rental units, which in our community, the last census identified 1,990 rental units in our community, so it's 15% of our rental stock. And I actually, in the staff report, I did include images of all the properties and the zoning. So the zoning, there's a mix, there are a number of RM2s in the Wilson Crescent area, there are a couple RM3s, and then some, some C1 and C4, I think 3C1s and a C4 and a CD unit. So there's a range. There, there's one RM3 and then several RM2s. You know, because townhouses are quite popular these days, that, you know, we could certainly fall into the category of something that might be redeveloped in that, under that use or form. I just thought I'd also show a slide here of where these properties are located. There's one in Rackendale, three in Garibaldi Estates, four in Wilson Crescent, two downtown and two in Valley Cliff. So they're spread throughout the community. And then I did also want to speak to, which is a bit to your point, Counselor Stoner, because we thought this could be quite controversial, we didn't want, didn't want to surprise anybody that we're making recommendations with, so we did a fair bit of work to try and engage and speak to the owners. speak to the owners. I managed to speak to all but one or get input or feedback from all but one of the landowners, and the responses were that seven, seven of the owners, one owner owned two of the buildings, but seven of the owners felt that they should have some kind of benefit, and that's where the OCP policy came in. They felt like if they were losing some opportunity, there should be some opportunity for density or height or reduction in fees. Six of the owners indicated that they actually were not that surprised that this was in line with what was going on in the Lower Mainland. Five, five of the owners indicated, or owners of five of the buildings indicated that they were interested in redevelopment, so not quite half, but almost half of them were actively contemplating redevelopment of those. Two of those were redevelopment as purpose built rental, so there's a business case for within the kind of the current market that rental can be replaced, but three of those were probably not considering purpose built rental. And then three, owners of three properties said they were interested in maintaining the current property kind of in the long term, in its current state and as rental, that they had invested in fixing them up and they were good revenue generators and they were just going to keep them as they were. And then three owners, or owners of three properties, said they felt like it was just unreasonable for us to put this type of restriction on their, on their land. So does that answer a little bit about kind of what's possible?
Yes.
I think that's the only piece that I had that was about specific properties, so I don't have anything more to say that would create conflict.
Any other questions, Counselor, on specific properties, so that we can bring Counselor back in?
I was surprised to see Castle Rock on the list. It goes back some years, 1980s, but I'd assumed there was provisions in that project that gave some protection to its current use.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. Yeah, including Castle Rock was really, it's almost irrelevant to try and apply it. We own it and it's run by Cedar Sky Community Services. So I only included it because I felt like if I was coming in with criteria and I was applying it, I might as well apply it equally across all properties that fit that criteria, given that we own, the district as well as owns the property. It seems like the risk is very low, but, you know, me by example, in order to be willing to accept those.
Thank you, Counselor.
On Government Road in North Yards, there's another buildings that's got purpose built rental and below market rental as well as market. You have to call the name right now.
Riverstones?
Riverstones.
Riverstones, yes, did look at that. Believe it might be stratified.
I believe it is.
Yeah. There were a few that I was like, oh, this should be one, and then as I looked through my criteria, I think stratification, there's also one on the by channel here that's rental but stratified.
And the one on Government Road also has housing arrangements in place.
Okay. Any other specific properties people want to ask about, no zoning? Sorry, we got Counselor to turn back in. So what's the plan from here, when Councilor gets back in the room, the next steps? And have you had enough feedback from council? I guess would be the, to wrap this conversation up.
Oh, and to Counselor for this one.
Let me ask a question. The Squamish Integrated Housing Solutions Group is referenced. I wondered whether that is an active ongoing forum.
Yes.
Made up primarily of the social service agencies?
Yes, the nonprofit housing agencies.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Pena. Well, just in terms of council feedback, I mean, I have comfort with, at this point, zoning these as rental. In terms of what, if any, consideration you give, I guess one of the questions I'm thinking about is, in terms of the things that are driving the short-term rental market and the lack of long-term rental, is a feeling that the Landowner Tenure Act is unfair to landlords, and so that is causing a big obstacle. So in the background, I was wondering if we just simply rezon these and use this new tool without providing any accommodation, does that then sort of light the fire and get more people pushing even harder on resolving issues in Landowner Tenure Act and then maybe, you know, sort of part of a broader solution? Because, you know, that seems like it's really one of the big obstacles in general.
You're mayor. Sorry, I'm not sure I understand. Was the question, there's already challenges for developers to develop rental because they have concerns around the strength of the Residential Tenure Act and that this might be a further loss of flexibility and so that may further discourage developer rental.
More that this, if we didn't provide the accommodation, this would be the thing to get them really pushing hard and maybe together with us to make whatever adjustments need to happen in the Landowner Tenure Act, then make long-term rental just generally more appealing. And so it's an initial pain to then get to a better, sort of more global solution.
Possibly, definitely, okay, through you, Mayor.
I'm not sure we can predict what's going to happen.
Bigger question.
Yeah, it's a bigger question. It may, it may not, it may exacerbate these issues, I'm not sure. I don't know if I have anything to add to that. It's difficult for us to speculate.
Hard to know. All I can say is that what I have seen, so this has been contemplated in some other communities, there are two communities in the South Port outline that have made some first steps in it, using this authority, and the response has been negative from the development community in general. A number of items that I outlined as potential risks from the loss of development opportunity come from the Urban Development Institute, and, you know, their, you know, their take was that this may further reduce the interest from private developers in developing rental.
Do we have a sense or feeling that there's not enough development in Squamish where these would be concerns?
Not enough rental development.
Well, I guess the fear though is with these, well, possibly, or just development in general, like I think the suggestion is it might discourage both, is that?
Through you, Mayor. No, the comments from the UDI were specific to rental, that they felt that as you constrain and limit opportunities within rental market, it becomes less appealing as an investment decision.
The UDI represents Elfris, so they represent one of the people. Okay, so next steps.
Yeah. So following this meeting, staff can draft a zoning amendment based on council feedback, and we could bring that to council in the near term. In the council report, I did say we could try and bring it quite quickly because originally this had been something that was interested, or council expressed interest in fairly rapid development. However, when that was drafted, that was prior to our last committee, the whole meeting where council had asked us to work on the Business Park quick fix zoning. And so since then, we've kind of created a group within the department that is going to be working on that. They're here with us in council chambers. They would likely be the group that would be working on this amendment, and so with them tasked on that, that would probably push the development of this finalized bylaw back a little bit. And then, you know, that's again the question of what is council priorities? You know, as we do more of these, we, you know, we get more into that option two for redevelopment, zoning bylaw, this is certainly something that could be rolled into development of the zoning bylaw if council felt like it wasn't a priority to do right at this very moment. So depending on, you know, how important council feels this is in terms of timing and priority, you know, the other industrial part, I think, could be bumped and this could come up in terms of priority. So I think we need from council direction as to whether or not this is a priority to do now or to do as part of the broader zoning bylaw update. And I do still need a little bit of clarity on whether OCP policy around supporting some level of increased density for those particular properties is something that's of interest or if that's not of interest to council.
Counselor Reese.
Well, I think, you know, subject to some of the concerns you raised, I think I would certainly entertain that because I think that's how it's going to happen. Right, it just, in every case, but in a lot of cases. And so I think it's a matter of trying to retain our goals and then look at what else we can layer on there to make this happen. So yes, I would.
Certainly, my impression is that we look at protecting the size of units, the cost of them, so that we're not creating gentrification in leading their development aspirations. Unless I see a shaking of heads by four people, I think that's a general direction. What should Counselor have to? And then in terms of timing, council, so, just so that I'm clear, either we're doing the Business Park amendment and these ones, and they both take a little longer, or we prioritize one over the other, or we prioritize one and send the other one into the zoning update. Okay, got the options right, where the counselors feel this fits.
So can you do that?
Yeah, sure, because I did that off the top of my head. So either they, this one, I think, was proposed to come back quite quickly, like the beginning of March-ish kind of timeline, pretty fast. But if this goes along with the change we've asked on the Business Park, they'll both take a little bit longer. Ballpark, three, three months, two months?
Essentially, this would then follow the timeline of the Business Park incision. So I don't think the Business Park incision is going to take much longer because we've done the consultation on this and this is basically just us drafting the amendments and putting it in, but it will be, won't be happening on the timeline that we talked about in the report.
All right, it'll happen on the Business Park, which is...
Yeah, do we have a timeline for that at this point? We haven't, just getting into it, so. Or council could say, you want that upfront, do the rental zoning and, you know, push it off, in which case the rental zoning won't take a long time, like it's, the bylaws are already, we've already done a fair bit of work on it, so it's not a big project, it's just, do we want to prioritize that?
Does that make sense? So it either goes by itself or it gets attached to the Business Park one, which will take longer, so that we're doing one zoning bylaw amendment, not two.
Yeah.
Or one will get sent into the overall update.
One more, a little wrinkle. If it goes by itself, it will probably affect the Business Park.
Yes.
By pushing it off a little bit.
Counselor Stoner.
So I think my suggestion is going to be option three, where we move ahead with the Business Park review and we shift this one into the overall zoning bylaw update. I appreciate the work that has been done this date and the amount of consultation. Part of me is thinking there's forthcoming information potentially from the province on further direction on this. And then also, I feel like this is just one course tool that's out there around how we actually try and secure more rental zoning broadly, so taking that lens to the more overall, overhaul of the zoning bylaw, I think, would be my preferred way to approach this.
Any thoughts from council? Counselor Anderson?
I would just like to, although I wouldn't disagree with the proposal that's made by Counselor Stoner, I'd just like to offer the observation that what we, the issues we want to address in the Business Park are beyond the Business Park, and that when we come to the full, more full discussion of zoning bylaw review respecting industrial lands, the context, the implications, the scenarios, they're also outside of the Business Park. So we shouldn't compartmentalize the Business Park too much when we're talking about employment lands or industrial lands. The issues are very broad.
Wait, I think that's understood. This was just a surgical thing. Any other thoughts on timing of this piece of legislative? Counselor Reese?
Yeah, I think I'm not too concerned about putting this off for a little period of time. The Business Park one I would like to see happen quickly, but I think there's a lot of unknowns, there's going to be experience in other communities, there's going to be some consideration of some of the points we've raised, which we really haven't kind of dealt with before as a group, and so I can see a fair amount going into this. So I also, I just, I look at that building, for example, without picking on a specific building, but just, if that was going to be redeveloped, it would be amazing to me if there wasn't a rezoning application that came with it. And I suppose that could happen, but I think the odds are that it would involve seeking more density, et cetera, something like that. So I think I prepared to a certain extent to take the list of that, losing that as rental stock, as long as we get the, we have the ability on rezoning to deal with these things. And I don't think there'd be many of those types of buildings that we'll go through without rezoning. So I could wait, so I could go with Counselor Stoner's suggestion.
I think in my mind, I would like to see this go with the Business Park fixed, because I think we've tipped our end and I think we actually need to protect what is currently there. There's a reason the province has given us this ability. And yet, we might not know the full impact, but I think in terms of preserving current rental stock in its current position, but still allowing some room for development and doing that before we get to the overall zoning bylaw is important. We know housing is an urgent need and if we lose the ability to protect these folks in the type of rental accommodation that they're in, I think we'll regret. So I'm actually, I would lean more towards tying it to the Business Park thing and bring it forward as one bylaw amendment sooner. Counselor Anderson, there's your hand again?
Yes.
So, Counselor, then Counselor Anderson.
I think that the, similar to what we were discussing, the Business Park one, there's something action now that, as imperfect as it may be, is going to tie into the full picture when we, when we do the concluded, sort of in the year, was the timeframe, the overall zoning review, and we may well be amending what we've done at that point. And whether we do that now or if we roll it out next year with the rental zoning, we may need to come back to it in six months to adjust. So I think it has a natural, if we were to tie it together, support Mary Elliot's proposal where we do them together, and there'll be a time to revisit them as we go through the consultation period and rolling out the new, the overall zoning amendment. So I think these are the two most pressing issues in the community, we should move on them as fast, as fast as we can, and that may be imperfect, but we're going to, it's going to be part of our ongoing work with the zoning review, so I'd move that we do both of them together.
Did you move that officially or did you want to wait until you, from the council?
No, I'm not going to move that officially.
So that, Counselor Anderson, then Counselor Pena.
I'd just like to mention that council has been here before with respect to addressing landowner concerns. A number of years ago, there was a rezoning application for what I call the wagon wheel treadmill, I'm not sure what the name of it is today, but it's quite a number of units there, and the sympathy of council today was no, because we're short of that type of housing, sorry. And I think it was rather heavy-handed and perceived to be that as so. However, a little bit later, we lost 85 low-income rental units just shortly before the Olympics. And I think that there was community regret and perhaps council regret, that more emphasis wasn't put on trying to address that loss or prevent some of it. That was the Hudson House and a couple other projects, together 85 units within a short period of time, and there's still, you know, there hasn't been that replacement quite to this day. So what I'm saying is that, and I was interested to see this slide where six of your landowners anticipated some type of initiative of council, given the trends and conversations in the Lower Mainland. So we've been there before in meeting this concern and playing it out.
Which timeline are you voting for? Do you still want to go with sending this to the long term?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, looking at our strategic plan, I have a bit of a bias towards, and considering this is fairly far along, seeing this first, but I don't know, I draw a hard line in the sand on that. I did want some clarification, though, when people are talking about doing these both together, I just want to clarify that that's only a timing thing and we would still see two separate bylaw amendments and vote on them separately as opposed to an omnibus and we accept it all or nothing. as opposed to an omnibus, and we accept it all or nothing.
Yeah, to be fair, yes, but certainly, especially if council has expressed interest in that, that's easy to do. We do tend to try and break things up where they might not run in the same level of support, and so certainly we can do that.
So you're...
I'm waffling at the moment.
Are you not waffling, councillor Stone?
Simply my timeline preferences, the one that you're supporting.
Okay, so with that, someone should put a motion on the table. We've got two different viewpoints at the table, so it kind of...
So I'll move that we tie the rental, the work with the rental zoning to the, to the work we're doing with the business parks. I don't know how we want to phrase those projects, but...
Put them on a similar timeline.
Put them on a similar timeline.
Secondary? Secondary by councillor French. I kind of want to move on, so unless there's a burning, like I need to speak to this, I tried to give everyone out between the courts and motion on the floor. So let's see if this one's successful, if not, alternative to councillor Stone. So all those in paper, oppose. Okay, motion carries. Wait, what was that? Was that a, we opposed?
No, I...
Councillor Reese and councillor Stone are opposed, and you were, didn't put your hands.
Yeah, I remember, so that means a vote for, and I was still voting, yeah.
Okay, so just two opposed. All right, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
How about we take...
You're good on...
We need to start the session.
We're done, I was just going to terminate. Do you need me to open up the other one before we take a reset?
Yeah, before you take the resets.
Okay, that's, phew, motion to terminate. Move by councillor Stone, if I can make a call, councillor Reese, all of the paper, all of the motion carries.
Next up, we had an hour for this, maybe we have a little less time. This is part, again, of orientation, and I asked staff to just prepare an overview of where these projects are at, any steps that we have, our jurisdiction going forward. So it's not an in-depth overview of the project per se, but just where we're at at the district and where our role is as a council in regard to these projects. Turn over the evidence.
Thank you, Mayor and councillor, it most certainly will not be an in-depth overview of any of these, any of these projects. So I wanted to start first with the Wood Fiber LNG and the Fortis Eagle Mountain, because both are essentially, you get one with the other, it's not an either or, both, if one happens, both are coming. So both projects, both the liquefied natural gas terminal, the Wood Fiber site, and the Eagle Mountain Fortis gas pipeline were approved by the EAO, one in Wood Fiber in 2015, the Fortis project in 2016, so they have five years to get going unless those projects are extended. The pipeline is actually three projects, there is a pipeline per se that goes from Coquitlam to the Wood Fiber site, it's a 24-inch gas line, it's big, you'll notice that. There's a compressor station on Mount Maligan, that's in the SLRD, we'll have very little to do with that, because it's not in, it's not in the district. And then, interestingly, from the BCR lands to about halfway around the coastline, there's a tunnel that goes under, under the ground at that point, and houses the pipeline. Both projects, as I say, were approved by the EAO, there are a number of conditions attached to both projects. Both require an environmental monitor, both required a number of management plans, whether they're air quality, I'm sort of jumping between projects, whether it's air quality, marine fish habitat, water quality, marine transportation, fish habitat, environmental management. Where we're going to sort of intersect with these projects is particularly around environmental management, emergency management, traffic management, what is called community services and infrastructure, particularly around transit housing for the employees, and then policing around those, visual quality. All of those management plans get referred out through the working group to the affected stakeholders. We'll probably see all of them, the affected stakeholders can, it'll differ depending on the nature of the plan. The air quality plan is going to go to a different set of people from the traffic and access management plan. We'll get referred on those, but we don't get to approve them, those will approve by the, by the province through the EAO. Both projects are actively working on those, I don't know which ones are coming. The Fortis project's more advanced than is probably, if, if these things go ahead, that's where we're probably going to see the first, the first activity and the first management plans. I suspect we'll see some of those management plans on Fortis within the next few months.
Okay, for clarity, when you say "we" at the staff level, does council see those plans, or get to provide comment with staff, or is it just the people in the working group?
I suspect we would circulate those plans where, particularly around traffic and access, community services and infrastructure. I don't know how much you want to see a fish habitat management plan or fish habitat. I mean, we certainly can circulate them to you. Probably the ones where we're emergencies, emergency management, or community services, I think those are the ones where you want one way in. And I don't think we'd deal with those particularly on the, on the working group level. So again, those are approved by the EAO, we'll get to provide our feedback on them when we see those. There's no, there's no set timeline for those, so it'll be when the applicant, when Fortis or Wood Fiber develops them, they'll get circulated. There are some specifications in the approvals about how that has to get done with respect to timelines. With respect to where our jurisdiction will intersect is probably not very much for either project. Wood Fiber is an industrial site, it's zone I-3, that use is permitted there. We may see a form and character permit around that, although that's for buildings, and some of this is machinery and equipment and not buildings. So there may not be many building permits either for the Wood Fiber side. There will be some, but I'd say the building permits are handled at the staff level. There will be a DP-1 environmental permit. We're starting to see some of the very preliminary information on that at the staff level on, for the work around Mill Creek, through the middle of the Wood Fiber side. That's really a rehab, reclamation project, because it's a concrete wasteland out there right now. So from that point of view, we may, we're probably going to see a DP-A1. And to be honest, I don't offhand know if that would be a delegated or a council permit. They're currently going through a lot of site preparation, demolition, removing equipment, removing, starting to remove marine elements, so pilings, they're substantially through quite a bit of that work to best of my understanding. They're now starting to look at some of the demolition, removing the concrete on site. Again, there are no, there are no permits required for doing that sort of work. Wood Fiber has no water and sewer connections, we're not going to do firefighting. There will be emergency management plans, but to best of my understanding, our fire rescue services are not going to be going in there if there's an emergency. That's a very specialized emergency response and emergency, emergency work. So there aren't a lot of permits with respect to the Wood Fiber side, but we will see. With respect to the pipeline and the tunnel, again, most of those permits, it's road use, soils permits, there may be some noise exemptions, this tunnel will run 24/7 for a year. So there is access to that site, materials disposition, so access, so where all those trucks running, noise issues, so we will be having to deal with those, although those permits, as I say, dealt with at my level, the CAO's level. Work in roads, utilities are allowed to work in roads without particularly special permits. We will have road use permits and road closure permits, again, those are dealt with at the, at the staff level. If we are dealing with development permits, what we can do with those, of course, it's a provincial approval, our jurisdiction there will be to cover and address issues that the EAO has not addressed. We can rework issues that the EAO's already, already dealt with, and we can't use those permits to defeat the projects. So, but we can add to, if the EAO has not addressed an issue and our permits address, maybe visual quality, then there is an opportunity for council to step in and deal with those permits. The, it looks like timeline-wise, the tunnel, they're starting to issue some of the initial tender, tender work on that, so that may start within the next six months. The pipeline in 2020, and the compressor, last, we don't have timeline on that, but the pre-design work is well advanced on that one. The pipeline has to be in place for the, for the plant to operate, liquefied natural plant to operate. So that's probably, am I, does that sort of give us a very brief summary of...
Let's see if there's any questions. Councillor Bacon, then councillor Reese.
Just in terms of the stuff that happens at the staff level, you know, obviously, non-discretionary is non-discretionary, but in terms of feedback to the working group and so on, and especially when it doesn't come to council, what is the context, like how much does our new strategic plan and those sorts of things direct staff's responses and interaction with the working group?
Well, I guess that depends on what matter the working group is dealing with. I guess I'm not sure.
Do you have an example in mind, councillor Bacon?
Well, not specifically, but, you know, it's hard to guess what sort of discussions the working group is having, but I'm just sort of wondering, you know, if it's not coming to council, at some level, direction from this council or past council is guiding staff's responses in general beyond the law requires. I'm just trying to understand, I guess, you know, how that context comes into play.
So, let me see if I understand you. So for the tunneling, right, that's a lot of material that'll come out and has to go somewhere, and it might get trucked out of here, but if council's strategic priority is to limit our GHD emissions, and that's like thousands of truckloads driving out of this town, if that's a delegated permit, would staff go, hmm, is trucking the best way, or is it better to put on barges and take it out? Is that kind of, what you're thinking like...
For example, sure.
I don't know. Like, so how much does our strategic plan, if these are delegated permits, influence staff, if you can, that?
To a small degree, now that those permits are sort of issued under the bylaws that we constantly have in place. I mean, with respect to the tunnel, they're barging from one end and trucking from the other end. We don't have, we don't have bylaws that prescribe how people can move material around, so we don't have the ability to say, no, you must use electric trucks, no, you must use barges.
If I can perhaps add some more clarity, and Mr. Maxine can jump in, is that any referrals that staff do or input are primarily based on permitting that we're involved in, so within our jurisdiction, which means that it's mandated or legislated by our current bylaws, by the district's bylaws, and then it would be policy around the OCP. Certainly, when staff are working, there's always a lens to the strategic plan, but there's no direct legislative connection that we can impose on Wood Fiber through the strategic plan. Does that help?
Yep.
Okay. Do you have another question?
I have a couple, but cut me off when you need to.
So those are on deck, we're behind schedule, so. Go ahead.
So there was, I mean, recently, there was a, went through the OGC, the Oil and Gas Commission, and then I think it's now in the hands of the Canadian Standards Association, regulation on floating LNG terminals, because Wood Fiber's kind of, and we are like the guinea pig, they're wanting to use these 40-year-old tankers, plus that have been decommissioned. What is our capacity, our expectation to, to get engaged on some of those issues, which, you know, I would argue have an impact on our community and its safety? And somewhat related to this, maybe this is better put off till the next topic, but, you know, we've seen with Garibaldi Squash, some of these things come, and we're like, oh, we don't have the capacity to respond to this adequately. So to the degree there are things like the CSA approval and these sorts of things that we would like to engage in, what is our capacity to do so, and do we need to adjust that at all?
Well, the capacity is contingent on how far we want to, we want to push the issue. I mean, in terms of CSA approval, that's, we have rather limited access to that decision, because that decision's being made by the, by the federal government. And outside of an emergency management plan, I don't know how much that, that issue is going to come back to us. I think if we want to get involved in that, we've got to sort of proactively address that issue with the federal government through the, I think, through the EAO. I don't know that, that there's a mechanism, given the approval, the approval in place, to sort of go back over that, that issue, and know that we're being given any sort of direct way to insert ourselves into that.
So if I can follow, so it was a few months ago, actually, before this council's term, that the OGC was asking for public comment on this topic, and I don't think that the district engaged in that. But there are, and I don't know what additional opportunities may or may not come up, but there are possibly some of these opportunities. It sort of sounds like, at this point, we don't have the direction or the capacity to really do much on that sort of thing if it comes up again.
I mean, in terms of, I don't think capacity is a huge issue with respect to responding to an opportunity that's afforded to us through the process. Where I, where resources may get taxed is if we're actively creating an engagement that isn't sort of offered. If we're going to go sort of our own way, rather than dealing with the path that's given to us through the EAO, the province, or the feds. It's a responding to opportunities given is one thing. Trying to sort of create our own engagement process is, is where resources may get to be a bit of an issue.
So we would have had the capacity to chosen to engage in the OGC engagement? Because that was an open and public thing, for example, or is that, I'm just making sure I'm understanding?
To be honest, I honestly don't recollect that, that coming before us, but that just means I don't, I don't recollect it.
I don't remember any of it.
To be honest, some of the, some of the engagement is done at a very general level through the newspaper, and we're not sort of actively asked. There's no sort of, hey, what's the district's opinion on this? It's just sort of put out in generally into the community through the newspapers, and sometimes we catch these things, and sometimes, sometimes we don't.
Hands are strongly on a letter that is on our agenda tonight, I got a response from the minister. Are you good for now, councillor Bacon?
Yeah.
Councillor Anderson and Stone, then, then, then.
Gary, you've referred to emergency management planning, and that likely will not involve us directly. However, Wood Fiber LNG will bring along new emergency response capabilities. We have had oil spills on both sides of our harbor, we've had two dock fires, and each of these incidents have raised issues of our preparedness. Is there a role for the district in at least encouraging collaboration to optimize the use of these new capabilities that will come to our, within our boundaries?
Absolutely, sorry, and if I misspoke, our involvement from a firefighting point of view is if there's an issue out there, we're not going to be on the ground. But in terms of active emergency management planning and collaboration, I expect, yes, we'll be very much involved in that. So it's just boots on the ground, if there's a problem over there, I don't think that Bill and his crew are going to be first responders.
Very good. The issue of transport of material that will be, that come from the tunneling work has been referred to, but what about the disposition of that material? Whether there may be perhaps a facilitating role at least in advising on the disposition of that material? For example, even the district might conceivably have use for it, dicking programs, certainly there's other people in the community that could have use for it. Thus far, Fortis has not, they've been in conversations over the last few years, haven't made a commitment or resold out a plan. haven't made a commitment or rescheduled out a plan.
Yes, we just had sort of a staff level meeting and that was raised. We know there are a number of sites that need fill. We need material for dikes. Some of the material is, stuff under the estuary is probably not that much use to anyone. But once you get into the rock, that's going to be useful to anyone and everyone. As I say, can be barged at the far end to wherever people want it. I need to be trucked from the PC Rail site to wherever somebody wants it. I mean, if our issue is just placing it and storing it. Okay. So yes, we have, we have some of those initial conversations.
Sure.
Counselor Stoner, then Herk, then Rice.
I'm just curious how long the typical referral periods are for these different types of plans that staff are taking through. And I'm assuming, Gary, that it's you that leads the response and you just take in staff, depending on what the?
Myself and Chris have been the principal sort of working group connections. There's no specific timeline for referral or response. That's sort of, each time something gets referred out, there'll be a timeline specifying. Sometimes timelines have been useful to us and sometimes they have not.
I, just for your interest, I did speak at Wood Fiber in December and asked them for a list of all the things that would be getting referred out and which ones we would provide and comment on, and which ones are just out there for people of general knowledge and have not received that list yet. But I am trying to secure that for our own knowledge so that we're a little more prepared, knowing that the EAO doesn't necessarily give us a lot of time. Or in this case, I guess it's the Oil and Gas Commission.
I think they've come through the EAO.
Will they still come through? Okay. I didn't know now that their job's done whether this goes over to the Oil and Gas Commission or not.
I think it's still the EAO.
Okay.
That's coordinating.
Any other question? Counselor, agree.
Thank you. The emergency management plan, what, Andy said that our fire department's the first responder over there. In past, when that site was operating as the pump, what happened then? Was this a departure or did they have their own capacity on site there as well? You know, I'm just trying to understand how much of a different, if this is a different way of operating or how it was prior?
I don't know how emergency response was handled at Wood Fiber. I've been, is that before?
Counselor Prince?
They had all their own firefighting equipment out there, from a proper real fire truck to hoses and?
And they staffed it with their existing staff.
And trained staff that would respond to any fire emergency.
Thank you. And then would the same hold true with the compressor station? As far as having some part of their emergency management plan, I mean, separate entities, of course, but with the Fortis proposed station, I don't know.
Response to that would probably be through the mutual aid agreement that we have with the SLRD, because it's in the SLRD. But again, when and how the response would be provided would be determined through that emergency management plan. Again, it's a very particular form of emergency. And unless the fire department has probably some experience, probably want to rely on. Well, I'm guessing there are probably lots of structural protections in place before you have to start sending people into it.
My understanding, the last time we looked at this in detail, is that our firefighters would be looking to protect assets within the district. They wouldn't be entering the compressor station itself. That would be, it's all phoned up, like it's, the systems in them are quite strong. But if it, if an explosion ignited a forest and that forest was heading toward, forest fire was heading toward that, like our firefighters were focused on protecting valleys there and not?
Right. Not the rest of the earth.
That helps.
Good, I just wanted.
Anything else? Counselor Reese?
Thank you. Just back to the tunnel material, who would own that? Is that the province? Would they charge a royalty on that? On the disposition of that?
I don't know, to be honest.
And I only ask that because, as you say, there may be some value to some part of it. And I remember a conversation regarding the dredging in the blind channel, that there would be a royalty, I can't remember who said it. Somebody extracted it and used it, there would be a royalty to the province on that because it's basically mining, in effect. You're taking stuff out of the ground. So it was just kind of curiosity. So I'm, I'm assuming it would be the province who would own it, but maybe charge a royalty on it.
There's some assumption remains that Fortis probably is anxious to find a home for it at the lowest cost. And if somebody can take it at no, no cost, then that's probably to benefit both parties, whether it's ours or whether it's a landowner that needs fill.
Yeah. It goes back to terms, if I recall correctly, it was Counselor Sanderson who had some experience with, that there's a royalty of about a buck a meter on dredging spoils on come up. Because those sudden blind channel potentially has use as structural fill. But I was just curious.
Okay. Who do you want to hear more on?
Absolutely. So again, that is a provincially approved, provincially approved project. Again, the EAO, under their all-season resorts policy. So that deals with the acquisition or disposition of crown lands for the development of resorts and resort development. And it's about 2,500 hectares, so it's a fairly substantial piece of land. Again, it's located in the SLRD. It's been a long time in the making, at least from 2003, if not earlier. 2017 approval with 40 conditions. Again, they've got five years to get started. Bed unit capacity of almost 22,000, but I wouldn't yet be able to find a clear definition of what constitutes a bed, a bed unit. 600?
Counselor Reese?
Well, going to the report that they gave me a copy of, I don't know if anybody else, six bed units per single family, four for a multifamily, and two for a teller. 21,000, give or take. I know this because I looked it up for an election speech. And their numbers are, that equates to approximately 5,500 separately, you know, 5,500 doors, if you like, because it's a mix of those three uses which propose. And that's one of the more recent presentations sitting in my den right now.
Yes, and to be honest, the only material that describes what that project is is the marketing materials that I've seen. And there's never been, even with the EAO approval, there was never a clear sort of, well, this is it and this is what got approved. It's always been a resort project approved on 2,500 acre hectares with 600 or so of skiing and the rest is for either not being developed or it's their base development for their commercial and residential component. It's a fairly sizable residential component. Again, they're, they've been doing some work, as far as we understand, with the relevant provincial department on a master development agreement. I haven't seen any of that. But for this project to proceed, absent them getting designated as a resort municipality, which we've been assured to this point isn't going to happen. So if that doesn't happen, then it's either got to come inside of our boundary through a boundary expansion, or the SLRD's got to take it on as a development project, which would mean they'd have to probably implement some sort of zoning bylaw to cover that area and then put in some planning. So once it's in, let's assume that it's taken in by the district or the SLRD deals with it. You're going to need official community plan amendments, sub-area plans, perhaps zoning bylaw amendments that are going to direct how the development occurs. And I'm not sure, one of the things that's never been clear to me is where the intersection of the master development agreement is and where amendments to municipal planning bylaws would be. Whether one exceeds the other or they've got to be in concert. We've never got a clear answer on that from the province, other than they would need to be subject to municipal bylaws. But how that process functions is not unclear, is not clear, sorry. So some, a municipality's essentially got to assume responsibility for it and do the requisite planning. There's probably an amendment to the regional growth strategy. And apparently, either the district or the regional district's got to sort of agree in principle for the province to accept the master plan and the master development agreement. I say, I don't know what if any work has been done on either of those two documents prior to talking to either the district or the regional district. And I say, I'm not clear where the, how those two documents will or will not work together that would then proceed an approval of a master plan by the province through Flynn Row. And then whatever zoning OCP amendments, we need to take, should the district expand its boundaries to take it in. So it's, it's a bit of a gray area as to where it's going to land. It appears to the province that it's got to land with someone in a concrete indefinite sense before they can proceed with this master development plan, master development agreement.
Counselor Reese?
Thank you. We had a presentation from them, I'm going to say it's last May or June, I recall, I don't recall exactly when. And I remember asking them what their timeline was. And at that time, they wanted a decision on who the regulatory authority might be within six months, which of course has now passed. That was their timeline. And so I'm wondering, I'm sort of under the impression that they were going to be coming to this council, the new council, with a presentation sometime more or less now or soon. Have we had any indication of that?
Not since the last time, I mean, there was a question that appeared a few months ago, briefly. I'm not aware of any pending requests to appear.
I have not seen any formal request. Certainly, they are interested. We haven't had a formal request. I suppose for council, what would be helpful for staff is knowing what information you would require, because obviously, the presentation is going to ask for us to expand our boundaries. That's just their preference. So I suppose, leading up to that, it's important for council to think of the information you would need in order to make that decision. It's a very specific decision. It's not about the project per se, but it is a decision about boundary extension. So, let's have a little tuck away in the back here, Ross. Any other questions about gas specifically for Mr. Buxton? Counselor Anderson?
If I'm not mistaken, it's the last council that approved an RFP to go up with respect to evaluate a boundary expansion assessment. Would it be helpful to bring that work back to the new council to at least have some kind of discussion on that initiative, which doesn't only concern gas? But it is my assumption that was the last council that dealt with that RFP and perhaps the decision to withdraw it. I understand it has been put on the shelf for now.
Perhaps I missed off this question.
Yeah. Counselor Anderson is correct, it's shelved for right now. The RFP was shelved. Any other questions? Mr. Draxler?
The last one is mine. During the last council term, the mayor of Lions Bay at the time, Carl Burr, and our former mayor were working together and actually went to the province to pitch a pilot project for average speed over distance. So this is something that can be confused with speed cameras. But in fact, the whole idea is not to give out any tickets whatsoever. So the idea was to put one in the Seagull corridor. And what happens is that you put in place a system that would log cars at the beginning of a section of highway and then determine how long it took them to get to the second point where they are logged again, whether that's through cameras or the weight of the vehicle, there's different ways to do that. And if you got there too soon, ergo, you were speeding, you get a ticket. But before you get to that spot, there's lots of signs that say you are entering a controlled area, you will be timed, and this is a matter of safety, it's trying to get people to slow down to high accident areas. Obviously, Lions Bay thinks they're a good candidate. There may be other places on the highway where a pilot project could go. I wasn't sure where this was going to go, but given that Mayor Burr stepped down and did running in and he did American, I've been approached by Carl Burr. His council has actually tasked him as a citizen to follow this up. And so he has approached me to see if there's interest of our council to pursue this. And we know from our meetings at UBCM that the minister was not opposed to the idea, but very cautious about the idea and would, wanted to see some form of public engagement that went along with any decision to implement an average speed over distance pilot project in the Seagull corridor. So, council, I would require your direction to pursue that with Mr. Burr and have discussions with him about any sort of public engagement. Or we can leave it up to Lions Bay, or we continue to partner with them. So I'm happy to answer questions about this one.
Would you like a resolution from council?
Yeah. It's whether this council thinks this is a priority for us or whether we want to leave it to Lions Bay at this time or work with them on it. Counselor, can you?
I'm just wondering if we have a sense of the staff time and resources needed for this and/or if there's grants available and just balancing that against the fact that it's not something that flows to the top of our strategic plan, so.
Well, I know there's nothing in the word planned for this right now, and there's certainly no budget against it. So that should weigh on council's decision, but Ms. Lundy, I don't know if you want to add something?
No, you captured it perfectly.
Any other questions? Counselor?
Besides the general concept, how far along was the process in the last councils? I guess both Squaw and Shipp and Lions Bay, like where?
It got to mutual lobbying at UBCM, who went to the minister. And the minister said, I'm interested. And what we pitched to the minister was it, it didn't even need to be Seagull, we just would like to see a pilot piloted somewhere in the province. And I know at the time, Mayor Burr was speaking to folks around the Malhat as well. So high accident areas, Lions Bay has all its stats about why their section of highway is also considerably more dangerous than other areas on the highway. And he's pointed to other jurisdictions around the world that have used this and brought down speed and accident rates quite considerably. So it's not a new thing, it's used in other jurisdictions. And at the time, previous councils supported this effort to work with Lions Bay to see if we could help them and help ourselves get a pilot project going. When there's an accident on the highway that closes the highway, it impacts all the communities, not just one. So it was felt to be a mutually beneficial experiment, I guess, at the time. But we didn't allocate any resources to it as the last council. It was really, we were trying to gauge the temperature of the minister. And I don't know, were you at that meeting or?
No.
No, it was, were you at that?
Yes.
Was Luke Warm to the, I would say, like, yay, let's try that. It was Luke Warm and obviously, they would want the support of our MLA as well, who was sitting in the opposition bench.
So, so the ask at this point would be to continue sort of lobbying efforts or to put staff time and resources? of put staff time and resources into some deeper research into the sales pitch or the...
I think I'd like your direction on whether you would like me to engage with Carl Burr on this issue, and bring it back to council with some details about what public engagement might look like, and what, and the location, and that sort of thing. If this council's cold on this, and like, no, we don't want to touch this with a tempo cold, then I can't drive this. The other thing I can do is have the crowd come in and do a presentation on what it is and how it's worked in other jurisdictions, if you'd like that piece of education before you make up your mind.
I want to spark that. I think that having maybe a delegation, a specific ask as to how we can support, what that looks like, and if we're interested, how we could support that and what that looks like is, would be good. Something that's interesting, safety on our highway, we, you know, is, it's lives, so I think we should look further at it, but I don't know exactly what that means at this point, so.
Okay. Did I say your name? Counselor Stone or Counselor Reese?
Yeah. I'd be supportive to explore what public engagement on this would look like. I think it is a sensitive topic, but there is huge concern with the risk to safety on the highway. We saw just recently with the changes to the limit down from 90 to 80, how much that vied a lot of our community members. But if there's, the science behind the average speed over distance is really, really compelling. And so I think it would be interesting to have a conversation with our community about what that looks like.
Yeah, thank you. I remember the last, some of the discussions in the last council, and our efforts really were more or less just sitting in the same room with the minister, and so it didn't really take any staff resources. To go further than that is a bit of a question and a struggle. I think it, and personally, from my understanding of it, it's a little harder to apply it to Swamish than it is to Lions Bay, because Lions Bay doesn't have any traffic lights, for example. But clocking somebody from this point to this point, there's a traffic light in the middle where they stop for a minute, that's going to throw the calculation off, obviously, and so you don't know whether they've been speeding before and speeding after, which is the problem. But then obviously extend or get there through this area. So it's maybe limited application to Swamish, but I think we all generally have an interest in a safer highway, whether it's in Lions Bay or Swamish or somewhere else in the highway. So to that extent, I'm supportive. So I think maybe we would want to, I don't mind engaging with Mr. Burr and find out exactly what we can do. The application of resources to that is going to be another question.
I think regardless of whether we do it in partnership with Lions Bay or we allow them to do it, their engagement has to be through the corridor, because obviously, if Whistler says no, or we say no, it doesn't happen in this corridor. So maybe what I propose, council, is that I'll have Mr. Burr come in and do his presentation on average speed over distance for your benefit, and then maybe bring some ideas with him around the public engagement piece, and then we'll make a decision from there. So I'll action that. All right, thank you. Okay, we're back into We Have a Hole, and next up is part of our Just in Time Orientation, our award-winning GIS team is here to provide us with feedback. So I'll let you guys introduce yourselves and jump in.
Good afternoon, hearing council. My name is Dan Griffin. For those of you who haven't met before, I'm the GIS supervisor at the district. Greg Walsh, GIS technician, we're the GIS team at the district of Swamish. And I just want to provide you a bit of an overview of what our GIS system is and what it can do for you as councilors. And a quick presentation, a few slides, and then I'll actually show you some of the tools that are available. So GIS, what is it? Geographic Information Systems. It was developed in the 1960s as a way of inventorying natural resource information using computer science. And obviously, you know, technology has changed rapidly since then. We've seen drastic modernization in technology, and GIS came along with that and is actually leading the charge in many ways. So it's, today, a modern GIS is about sharing information. It's about participation and collaboration. And it's not just maps, but it's leveraging data through a collection of technologies to make and help decision-making, helping improve decision-making. And it uses location as the key element, and that's the difference. So GIS is a framework for gathering information and managing and analyzing data. It reveals deeper insights and patterns and relationships and connections between information. It helps us set priorities and see trends, identify problems, monitor change, and respond to events, and plan for our future. It helps us to unlock the potential of data for better decision-making, using, again, that idea of geography and location as the key. And that's important for local government, because many of our decisions, many decisions that the district of Swamish makes, has that location element as an aspect to the decision. So GIS at the district of Swamish began as a recommendation out of the asset management plan in 2010. That plan identified a need for tracking, managing, and analyzing our assets and inventorying our assets. The program originated in the engineering department, and later that year in 2010, we launched our first web mapping applications. The program expanded and began and developed over time as well, and we started to use and develop workflows and workflow solutions for business issues. And one of those is actually all of our development applications we now manage or we have managed through our GIS system, because we didn't have a dedicated development management solution at the time. As the mayor mentioned, in 2015, we won the Ezra Award of Excellence for our work in GIS, and that really recognized our GIS system as an enterprise platform. And at that time, shortly after, the decision was to move GIS from the engineering department to IT to help ensure that it gets integrated as an enterprise platform, along with our technology transformation program and the systems that we're implementing through that program. So really, the core to the system or what the interface that most people see through the system is the web mapping applications. There's hundreds of layers on our GIS, property layers, land use, environmental, infrastructure layers, transportation, recreation. And we continue to build and develop new layers as new programs come on, new layers get added to the system. And we continue to build workflows as well around these new solutions. Our development showcase is a good example of that, where the community can go on and look at active development files and look at the information we have in those developments. We also use our system for collecting and inventorying for our fieldwork, so for our operations department. They use our apps for doing utility inspections, logging things like danger trees, you know, doing inventories of bus stops and sidewalks, and we're doing a ditch classification, we've just wrapped up a ditch classification exercise right now as well. So it's, you know, it goes beyond just the office into the field as well, and we have the availability to use our tools on multiple devices, smartphones, tablets, whatever. So our web maps, we tend to see about 140 staff using the web mapping application, those are unique users per month. We get about 700 public users per month, unique users, and that equals about 2,500 map sessions, so it's pretty widely used in the community. Often talking to people about what I do, and they're like, oh, GIS, I can go onto the map, and you know, they love playing around on there, turning on different layers. So it's great to get the feedback from the community about what we do. And again, I mean, it's there as a decision support tool and a planning tool. So I'll just talk a little bit about one of the other aspects of our program, which is our open data site. So at data.swamish.ca, this is a place where people can go and actually download and interact with the data directly, rather than having to go to our web mapping site and turn on layers and try to intuitively find things that way. They can go through data.swamish.ca and search for specific layers and download specific layers or look at, do some analysis right on the site. Right now, we have 54 data sets on there, and we get about 200 users per month accessing that site. And it's been really helpful for us, because rather than people coming to us directly for data now, we can just send them directly to that site. So, you know, developers, engineering firms, architects, they love just being able to access the data without having to submit a data request and wait for us to respond, zip up a file and send it to them. So it saves, it's very efficient in that sense. And also, you know, lots of post-secondary education. We often get requests for data, and they can just go on here, and they can access data, and they can take it away and do what they want. So actually, I'll give you a little tour of what that site looks like. So this is the open data portal. So this is our open data portal. Again, you can, you can search for data sets directly, or you can use some of the categories to look at groups of data. It's a little bit hard to read, some of those groupings, but I'll go into the business license data, because that's always fun to look at. So click on business license. So again, you can download the data in different formats, so these are all machine-readable. You can download the data as a spreadsheet, as a KML file that you use in Google, or CSV, SHAPE files as well. You can do some analysis right within the tool. So I click on categories here. You can see, it gives you a graph immediately, you can see that there's 481 construction businesses operating in Swamish based on the current business licensing data. I go into the data. There's an API that's available, so you can embed, or someone could embed this right into their own website or into their own app, so they could build their own app and pull the data directly from our, from our site. Application programming interface. Basically, it's the code behind the data. So if somebody, rather than downloading the data and using it, they could actually access the data directly and dynamically. So anytime we made an update to this layer, they would see that update. So they could build it into their app, and then they would never have to go back to the site and sort of, you know, pull the data again, it's always available. The other, the other, the other things you can do, there is a web mapping application built in here as well. Okay, maybe we'll come back to that. I will just go to our web mapping site now. So this is our website, swamish.ca. Under Discover Swamish, there's Maps and Data and Web Maps. Go in there, and then there's a link to our Swamish web map, so this is the public version of our web mapping site. So just to give you a brief tour of what's available here, there's a general search that acts as similar to a Google search, where you type in something and then it takes you to that location. There's some navigation tools to zoom in and out, but you can just use your mouse to pan around. Some identifying tools, so you can select objects on the map. There's some search ability that's a little bit different than the general search. You can search for addressing, search by parcel identifier number, you can search for a business. So if we did that, and search for a business name, let's see. C-Sky Donla, takes us to that location. Turn on the air photo to get a better view. It's a little bit hard to see here, but you can actually scroll back through previous years of imagery. There's nothing there. So you get a historical view of what that location looked like. We do have budget, actually in 2019, to parse some new imagery. The last imagery was done in 2016, so there's been a lot of change in that time, so we'll get some, we'll get an updated photo likely sometime this summer. There's some query tools and filter tools as well, so you can interact with the data and bring up different data sets on the map based on different parameters that you put in there. You can upload data if you have a CSV or some other type of file with a location in it, you can upload that data. There's also an integration with Google Street View. As we pan around and move, your location changes on the map as well. So that's really helpful for staff when they're looking at going up to a site, they can bring up the map, they can preview where they're going to go, they can look at maybe different conditions there before they even go up to the field. And internally, we have lots of documentation linked to the system as well, through our system, so all our ASBEL drawings for water sewers, storm system. Those drawings are linked to the locations, so that staff can access the information directly, similar things like legal plans and property information that's available to staff as well. So we continue to build this out, and as we continue down the path of our technology transformation program, we'll see more and more integrations as we bring more of these systems online and be able to leverage the data that's available in these systems and tie to the location information, be able to display it through our mapping systems.
Dan, can I just ask, in terms of where communities are taking GIS, in terms of helping improve productivity in field, or in, like, what's possible? What is the future of GIS?
What is impossible?
Because we've done a lot in a short amount of time. And I'm just, like, when you look at your field and where it's going, and we've got, you know, the ability to create apps and help other people create apps, but what does it do for us as a district? I'm trying to wrap my head around, like, well, what's next? It already seems cool, so where does it go from here?
I, my, what I see really next is being really empower on the users. So less about Greg and I, we step back more, and it's more about empowering the users, so providing tools and ability to create your own apps, to pull your own data sets in. If you want to, you know, visualize something, they're available to you in a few clicks, rather than having to come past to produce a map and print it out on a plotter and bring it to a meeting, you could do that directly in your meetings as well. So really, that's a big thing I see is empowering the user. The other thing we're starting to see a lot more of is 3D data, so adding that third dimension. So starting to see, you know, rather than just a two-dimensional view of the street, you start to see, you know, the building layer and the street layer, and then the underground servicing layer, and it's all in three dimensions. And, you know, you can pan around and zoom around and look at, yeah, we're not quite there yet. But yeah, there's amazing things that are happening, and, you know, the pace of, the pace of change is just accelerating, so it's really interesting to see. When I was researching this presentation, actually, I found out that the first commercialized GIS software came out in 1981, and that's coincidentally, this, I was the age that my son is now. And that's coincidentally, this, I was the age that my son is now when that came out. And that, I just, like, imagining the change that went through in my time, in my experience with GIS, I've been in the industry for 25 years, so I've seen a lot of, a lot of change in that time. So yeah, it's exciting and it's, it's interesting to be a part of. And that's, that's about it. I, you know, mentioning some of the projects that are coming up. We have the employment slant model, the indicators project with our OCP indicators, Sony bio update, environmental mapping that continues, real estate strategy, they're all, they're all leveraging our GIS system and our GIS data. So if there's any questions?
Council?
Last year, there was some discussion, perhaps it was a previous member of the council, regarding 3D mapping as an initiative, perhaps evaluating building massing, looking at scenarios for building massing in a development project or in a neighborhood plan. Let me look quickly, is there such a thing as a 3D mapping initiative?
Yeah, we had done some, a 3D mapping a couple of years, three years ago now. We had a student, a BCIT student who'd been engaged and they, they actually built some models for us. So we kind of dabbled in it a little bit, but we haven't done a ton since then. There is some talk through the employment lands modeling that, that would have some aspect of that. We'll be able to develop some of those massing models and, you know, identify commercial space and industrial space within a building. We, we have to wrap our heads a little bit around how that's gonna, how that change is gonna happen in terms of our data and how we manage data. We don't have processes right now that the district's to get us to 3D just quite yet, but definitely I see that coming.
Continue.
A project that we'll be hearing about this evening is the Howson Marine Reference Guide. Fiona Beadie of the Vancouver Aquarium has been involved already in a kind of a preliminary project, and she was not aware of the district's GIS mapping system because maps she'd been using, that we've been using to exchange information on assets in northern Howson were ancient. So I'm wondering whether there is some potential for the district to be offering services, if you like, in-kind services toward that project? Do we have anything to offer here at the District of Squamish for that general Howson Marine Reference Guide project?
Yeah, it's interesting that you mention that because I'm actually meeting with Fiona after, later today, with Sarah and Janet to talk about how we might share, share information. That's a great example of how we can leverage our open data site. So we could provide data to them, some of our marine data that we've done through our environmentally sensitive area mapping, and provide datasets to them and they can just pull those datasets directly off our open data site to populate their, their application. It'll be interesting to see what comes out of that, but I think there's lots of opportunity for sure.
Is there a risk for some data layers, the information is incomplete? Or perhaps there might be kind of caveats put forward? I'm not sure. An example I have is archaeological potential zones. They tend to be where there's already been, say, a gas line project go through or something like that where there's been evaluation, but in fact, it's woefully incomplete. But maybe there should be some, I don't know, cautionary about some of the data, is that your experience?
Yeah, we have, there are, there are, I'll do it. So there, there is a, disclaimers that are attached to the use of our web mapping sites. There's talk about, you know, use at your own risk essentially. There's the open government licensing, data licensing that comes with our open data site. And that licensing model is actually produced by the government of Canada and it's been used by provincial agencies and municipal agencies using that same framework for, for data sharing. It's, you know, it's definitely a concern. I think, you know, some of the data is definitely used, well, all of the data essentially is used at your own risk. We don't want people making legal decisions based on, say, our property boundaries or things like that. You know, it's a representation, it's not the truth. So it's, you know, so we need to be clear on that absolutely and try to communicate that when people are using our information.
When the reports are generated, that does come up, so.
Questions, counsel? And also if you have, like, how-to questions, so if you've been trying to figure something out on the system that maybe has, you know, you know, in bar with it, you can ask these questions. So, Karen, Counselor Petrie?
So a recommendation from former counsel Pryor was that, sort of, use this habit with us, beside us during all the meetings. And so I've been doing that and it's incredibly helpful to kind of understand the context of a lot of our decisions. I'm just wondering, like, with something like a road, at this point, is that just a polygon with a road label or do we have an understanding that this is a contiguous transportation system and there's population and traffic and all that? Like, where is our sort of level in that data of understanding of what this road is, for example?
It depends on the, a lot of the data itself is driven out of projects. So something like the African Transportation Fund, for instance, or the, we're going through our community transportation, traffic study is the work that we're supporting. Anyway, the, the data that gets built out of those projects gets, gets put into the system essentially, for the most part. We do have some modeling around roads. There's a provincial digital road atlas that we utilize within our system. We provide data to them, they provide data out to all other organizations, including like 911 emergency callouts and things like that, they utilize that data. So there's a lot of data sharing between agencies and between projects. As far as the sophistication of how things are connected, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of dependent on the dataset itself and how much work is gone into developing the dataset to support some of the projects that are going on within the district.
Counselor?
I've used, I've used the GIS for, well, now in this role more than, than ever before. I've gone and looked around, but I can already tell just by through your, actually, this screen is, is a perfect example. That function is great and I just learned about that now. But I've been doing the same thing, but going back, comparing two different, going back and forth to Street View to, just to double check that I'm in the right spot and, you know, maybe the signage on the front of business or whatever it is. So I need to spend some more time with, with this to, to harness its full capacity. Now, but that said, this is, is a great tool. And where do we stand as far as amongst other, like, who, who do you guys say look up to or aspire to? Maybe it's, maybe we're off, maybe we're leading on this front, which is a great place to be, but is there other examples of what the data sharing and that openness and that is that?
We're actually really lucky where we are because the lower mainland, BC in general is really at the forefront of GIS technology. And from a municipal perspective as well, District North Vancouver's won many accolades for their, for their work. And we're constantly referencing other, other sites and other communities and talking to other communities. We've got a great relationship with, with their, they're building their, their site now and developing on that. So we do, you know, we're constantly working together with other communities and we're lucky because they tend to, we tend to have migrated to a similar platform and we're leveraging similar technologies. So when we have issues, there's, there's lots of resources out there to help us resolve this. Yeah. You know, to answer your question specifically, there's some communities, like bigger communities, obviously, you know, in the States, like San Diego, that have amazing GIS departments and, you know, plenty of people working on GIS. We're not quite there. But, but, you know, as far as, as far as a small community, I think we're pretty proud of the work that we've done. You know, we feel that, I think, get to a really great place, you know, with, with, you know, fairly limited resources in terms of staffing and budgets.
And I'm interested in the 3D or moving towards that, that 3D piece because there's, as much as this, the Street View link is awesome, it gives you an idea of just sort of where things are now, it's sometimes it's hard to envision, well, they're gonna add, you know, three meters of fill and they're gonna do this or, what, like, how, I guess, yeah, what does it take to, to get there from, from, from your end? Is that, is that a whole nother, the equivalent of doing all this again? Or are we like one day, two pieces away from, from something like that? Like, how futuristic is this? Because it'd be, it'd be great to have it in, in front of us, but, you know, how far away is that? If you had to, if you had to guess, I know.
It's, yeah, it's a tough question. I, I think, you know, what really supports us is having the data available, the processes available to help put the data into the system. If we're not having to go and, you know, enter data, but we're actually able to pull it from sources. So let's say a developer came in and they were able to provide 3D files to us to put into the system. Something that, like that would drive that process much more quickly than if we have to go in and do that work ourselves. It's partly, it's partly setting up those processes and those systems to help feed the.
So it could be done, be sort of piece by piece. If someone's developing here, their responsibility might be to help us 3D map the surrounding area. Eventually, we'd just be looking at the missing, the missing pieces at some point down the road.
Yeah. There's also a technology aspect to it as well and it's, the, like, the public sort of interactive aspect of 3D mapping is, is really just emerging now, I think. There's been lots of desktop availability where people can have big computers and big systems that enable you, and graphic cards that enable you to, to do the, the 3D work on a desktop. But doing that on the web is a different, is a different, you know, different technology and it, it's a different problem. So that's just, that, that, those solutions are just emerging as well.
In the meantime, we have asked developers to provide, like, 3D guide eyes of their developments to give counsel context of what it looks like from the street, from the air and the sort of neighborhood. But we haven't sort of mandated it in order to create tape from these guys yet. And it makes me curious when we start doing neighborhood planning about how could we use the GIS to help us with neighborhood planning?
Counselor Rice?
Thank you. How do you locate things? Is that through GPS?
We do use GPS, yeah.
So for example, so the bottom picture there is from Google Street View.
Yeah.
And the top one's from Google as well?
No. So the, the top one is actually, I'll just show you a quick tip here. If you click on this button, it'll take you right to where the, the Street View is on the map. So that'll gelocate your, your point onto the, on the map and gelocate it on the Street View, so they're connected. So the, the image at the top, this data is acquired by the district. So in 2016, we actually hired a fixed wing aircraft to go and fly the district, take imagery, and then that imagery gets processed into these digital photos. And the reason why we do that is because we want an engineering, engineering quality image. So we have to set up ground control points and that process, that, the translation of that data is a, is a fairly systematic process where they use those ground control points to adjust things. So it's not, I don't want to get too technical, but, but essentially, so that's, that's the reason why we acquire it ourselves and we don't look to, like, just pulling in Google as an image for the base mapping. For the street mapping, it's more of a, you know, it's, it's, we can, we're lucky, we can actually leverage the Google data for, for that. And it doesn't have to be as engineering specific, you know, it's, it's more for a visual.
But if you were putting a water line, for example, down one of those streets in the top picture, do you locate it with GPS?
Yeah. So the, the company that would do the work, the consultant, the engineering company that would do the work, they provide us with their digital ASBELs. And those digital ASBELs get inputted, input into the system. So that's typically the workflow is we get the data, we import it in the system and build the layers from there. Craig's gonna bring up the water system there. Okay. So there's our, those are our utility layers.
And how accurate is that coming from GPS?
It's, we have, we have a high-grade GPS at the district, so survey quality GPS. So depending on the last time things were collected and relative to other things, like property lines and whatnot, we can get accuracy down to 30 centimeters. The, some of the layers are better than others, some of them are more of a representation and have, not everything has been GPSed. It's, some of the stuff's positioned relative to other layers and some of it has been GPS directly, so it's sort of dependent on the layer.
It's more accurate than my GPS. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Paul Greening is here to represent the Squamish Valley Rotten Gun Club. Sorry to keep you waiting, Mr. Greening. We have a letter request, come to the table if you'd like to thank me. So in your, in the whole package, you have seen the letter from the president of the Squamish Valley Rotten Gun Club, Mike Morgan, looking for a letter of support from counsel stating that we support the continued operation of the club. And I don't know whether you want to add to that, Mr. Greening, or you just want counsel to have at her, but maybe you ought to put some context around it.
Well, as you can tell, I'm not Mike Morgan. Unfortunately, he was called away on some family business, so he asked that I make myself available to answer any questions that council staff may have. I'm a secretary with the club and, yeah, basically, our club membership, we're, for those that aren't overly familiar with us, we're a not-for-profit organization, registered under the New Societies Act, been around for about 76 years now, something like that. We provide scholarship programs for Howson secondary. We provide a safe environment for target shooting and also for hunters so that we don't have these ad hoc impromptu ranges out in the, in the bush. So we have a variety of things that we do. We support the Nordics, the North Shore Nordics as well as Sudasky Nordics by providing them with a range. So basically, we have a predominantly local membership now. That's a bit of a change from past years where we had more out-of-town members. Now we are 60 to 70% local membership. And being a not-for-profit, we're member-funded, so we would like the, the luxury, I guess, of being able to assure our members that we have the support of counsel to go ahead and spend their money on further upgrades to our existing facilities and continue with things like our noise abatement program that we've had going now for a couple of years.
Counsel, any questions? We, we don't, we haven't provided letters of support just in general to other not-for-profits. Generally, we want to operate in the district, we're quite supportive of that. But this is the ask before us, so a bit of a Florida questions. Counselor Rice?
Yeah, I kind of had the same question because typically, we've given letters of support to a variety of different not-for-profits on a specific project.
Okay.
We support them doing this or we support them applying for a grant for such and such. So this to me sort of came out of a vacuum and just like a letter of general support is for your operations. Well, today that might be fine, we don't know what you're gonna do tomorrow. So that's why you just don't kind of get a blanket pass. It's just, it's just kind of not what we do, to be frank. Individually, I think your support, you know, you have a lease which we don't have control over, you have zoning which we can't, we changed it with your grandfather. So there's all kinds of security you have with those types of things. I've had conversations with your president and with Mike Waller, if I get to take your pardon for him. Some of the problems I know of that ranges are having is with the towns roaring up around them and it ending up in Supreme Court and noise issues and we have no control over that.
Right.
So if that ever happened. So, um, if that ever happened, I mean, covenants and so forth help you, but, uh, we really don't have control over that kind of a process. So, um, so I think those are the risks and there's no assurance we can give you that that will happen.
And no, we're not looking for that type of assurance. I think, I think it's, uh, uh, the, the thought process behind it was more that, uh, we, we did have a general support from, um, previous council. This is the new council, a lot of you don't know who we are, what we do, you know? So, uh, I know we, we did canvas candidates prior to the election and, uh, we, um, I think we're looking more just for a, a, maybe too broad a statement, um, to say that, uh, you know, the, the continued operation of the Squamish Valley Rotten Gun Club is a good thing for the community. And that would be what the letter of support would be about.
Other questions, Counsel? Counsel Reese?
I would like to acknowledge, uh, from my, my observation, uh, the efforts and the success of your club's noise abatement program. I've had the opportunity to, uh, visit with your executive and discuss, uh, those efforts and, um, the success as measured over the last few years in terms of, of complaints, if you like. I also think that, uh, your contributions to other local clubs and community groups should be acknowledged. And in fact, I had pointed out to your current president that he admits of you in the list. It's quite impressive. However, I, I'd like to also echo Counsel Reese that I would prefer to see a specific, a request or a letter of support specifically tied to a grant or, or a grant application or a project.
Okay.
But I just feel that we should go on record, I would like to go on record, to acknowledge the efforts you're making in your noise abatement program and that it is an example for other situations and groups and projects here in the valley.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Campbell?
Um, I, I have similar sentiments to the other councils. I, I wonder, um, just in the context though, if we sort of turn down a request, how that looks now at this point. And so I'm wondering if, you know, as an alternative, we should consider, uh, you know, if you'd like to offer a councilor a tour to just sort of the ones that you didn't get to speak to going up until the election, just to understand what's going on there is, um, an alternative to this resolution possibly.
Absolutely.
Counsel Murphy?
Thank you. I, I like, as a user of our backcountry, I'm, I'm very appreciative of your, uh, facility and having a safe place where people can go and, uh, rather than the, the ad hoc ranges or facilities we'll call it, in the, uh, that, that happened out there. I think it's very important and, uh, and your education with, with, um, firearm safety and all the tradings and particularly with the Nordic aspect too, I think it's, I think it's great. I do have concerns about the, the letter of general, of general support, thinking about having just come through our grant process and all the different, uh, problems that we, that we deal with. We haven't, um, as, as Counsel Reese said, we haven't really, we haven't, uh, just like it said, we like, we like what you do, although through various actions, I think we can, we can say that. I mean, there was an application just the other day with, uh, um, not gonna get there right now, sorry. Uh, so there, we have ways we can, we can help, we can, we can support, um, a letter at this point, just sort of the blanket support. I can't, I'm not really, uh, I don't think I could support opening up the, the door to all other non-.
Counsel French?
I, I have similar thoughts. Just a broad letter of support, uh, doesn't make sense to me. But that doesn't take away from my own support of what happens at the range. I, I like, like Garment, um, acknowledge and appreciate the various programs that exist. And if the club was to come to us with a request to support a specific application for funding or a grant, uh, I for sure would, uh, would be in support of knowing the value that the club has.
So, Mr. Greenie, I don't think you're gonna get your motion today because that's more than four, four councils that have spoken against doing a letter of general support. But I think I've heard agreement that we are here to provide letter of support on specific projects. Certainly, I've used the facility, um, pre-politics, I used to participate by it along the club, so understand the benefit of having that, uh, in my neighborhood. Uh, and have been speaking with your president about the noise abatement. And, uh, I know in terms of asking staff, we had only two specific complaints with regards to the Rotten Gun Club over the last year, which is remarkable, given the size of your membership. And, um, and I appreciate all the help those clubs made, actually, to be good neighbors and.
We try. We, we do cap our membership voluntarily at seven fifty. So we've got over five hundred, I think last year was five hundred and thirty-five locals, I guess, residents of Squamish in there. So it is very much a, a community group.
Absolutely.
So we better be nice to our neighbors.
Yeah, and, and Counsel, at the point, I'm aware of how much other people use that facility as well, just in terms of the Rotten Gun Club, so it is a community facility. So, um, I think their general support from council and, and happy for the club to bring back specific letters of support in due course as they require them. I think generally.
Oh, that's, that's very fair. Yeah. And I completely agree with your assessment that's just too broad. It's, it's, uh, I can see that. But I've also seen from our talk that there is support within this council for the club to continue in what it's doing.
Thanks so much for coming today.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Counsel, maybe we'll do just a five-minute recess while our next presenter gets set up. So we'll reconvene, uh, at five to two. Uh, so we have two delegations today. And first off, thank you for your patience while we got our technology working, is the Eco Club of House Sound Secondary. And so I will turn it over to you and, I mean.
Should we just stand here to?
Well, everybody who needs to speak needs to be at the table because it's microphones.
Oh, I see. Okay, um, I guess we have people to.
Sorry, there's a lot of speakers. So we might have to take turns and.
Okay. So, um. Yeah, we'll just stand here then, so you guys don't have to.
Standing, you need to sit down, actually. Our microphones are not that great, but. Or you can stand at the podium.
Oh, would that be easier? Okay, maybe we'll do that, because we know what order we're in.
Okay. We'll use the podium. All right, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
So just introduce yourself then.
Yeah. Uh, hello, my name is Kathy Cormack and I'm a teacher at House Sound Secondary. And it's my great pleasure to be here today with our Eco Club, which represents our Aboriginal and non-Arbanish youth from House Sound. We would like to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today. This passionate group, group of young people is here to tell you not only about a problem that we have here in Squamish, but they would also like to propose a solution. One that we hope you, as our elected representatives, will put into place to protect our home and future.
Is Squamish hardwired for adventure or hardwired for hard plastic? Should we be calling ourselves the outdoor recreation capital of Canada while we continue to degrade the outdoors? We'd like to ask you this question today and talk about some solutions.
So to give you some background as to how we started with our project, we started looking into plastic, um, by showing the documentary, A Plastic Ocean, to the students and staff of House Sound Secondary, as well as the students of Squamish Elementary. This documentary outlines the devastating effects of plastic on marine life. Following this, we set up our own exhibition in our school by collecting five days of plastic from House on Secondary produced by students and staff. And we created an art exhibition in one of our classrooms with this by hanging all the plastic we found from, suspending from the ceilings and also piled on the floor. So we called this exhibition An Ocean of Plastic, similar to our A Plastic Ocean documentary. We invited students and staff from House Sound Secondary, as well as students and staff from Squamish Elementary, oh, sorry. And we invited them to swim through our plastic waste. We, after this, offered our position to our guests and presented it to us. Welcome to Second, which we will show you shortly.
So of course, after doing this project of collecting plastic, we decided to take a trip to Kearney's or GFL now to, um, see how this plastic is actually being recycled. And so here we saw many things that disturbed us and the tower of plastic, as there are pictures up there, definitely one first place. So Squamish's very own plastic tower is a buildup of all the plastics that have been recently collected in Squamish. This tower isn't necessarily contaminated too. This is a buildup of plastic recycling that won't ever be recycled if there are no buyers. And currently, it just sits there. So this is actually costing us instead of earning us. Another problem we found out was a couple of years ago, China declared that they will not be taking plastics to recycle anymore. In the past, China was the buyer for recycled plastics, but in twenty seventeen, they put their foot down. A majority of products they bought were actually too contaminated to properly recycle. Therefore, they were just getting garbage. And with that, there's a buildup of products actually staying with us. Can.
So, plastic costs us in many ways, and if our environmental argument isn't enough, then consider the economics. One of the biggest ways cost, plastic costs us is by hurting machinery. Rubbed plastics get entangled in the machines we use to sort them and package them and end up costing a lot of money in repairs. We couldn't get the figures for our local facility, but we found that in the city of San Jose, they're spending, on average, a million dollars per year to fix their machinery. As Annie mentioned, um, our plastic contamination is costing us and it's leading us to have no buyers. And by removing single-use plastics, you remove the problem. Right now, we're, money's being spent to package plastic, sort it, and, um, store it in a spot that GFL's renting. And there's no buyer for it, there's no revenue being taken from the product. And the, one of the biggest costs we see connected with plastic is through the landfill. We're spending so much money to expand the landfill when we could save that money and put it to better use by preventing the influx of plastics. When properly sorted, single-use plastics should be one of the only things going to the landfill. And if you take out single-use plastics, ideally, the landfill would drastically be lost. Around the world, there's examples of, um, benefits of reducing and imposing, um, laws around plastic consumption. In Washington DC, there is, there was an eighty-five percent reduction in plastic consumption after imposing a tax. In the UK, they predict seventy-three million pound, um, economic benefits, um, from imposing a similar tax. And we're not looking to hurt Squamish businesses or businesses in general. We're asking that they use alternatives. We know that there's paper and compostable materials available and we know that there's other options and, but we also realize that it might be difficult for businesses to accept. And so we're asking that if this goes through, um, there's different, um, outlets we could use to impose this, such as asking commercial business space owners to follow a quota per property or put a limit on businesses or target consumers.
Should Squamish really be called the outdoor recreational capital of Canada when, if we don't make a difference, five years from now, the height of our plastic recycling will be the same height as the Squamish chief?
Squamish currently is above the provincial average regarding the usage of plastics. As a global, as a global attraction Squamish is, we, its citizens, need to be setting an example. With all the tourism Squamish attracts every year, we need to ensure that single-use plastic will be banned. This way, Squamish is certain to remain a beautiful destination to live in and visit.
Let's take a look at the city just to help Vancouver. As part of their single-use reduction strategy, in twenty nineteen, we will not only increase the amount of disposal bins in the city, but as of June first, twenty nineteen, with council approval, we will ban single-use plastic straws, strip-on plates and containers.
To actually make this initiative possible, Vancouver's created a plan with different phases and goals, so everything can be and has been being completed in a reasonable time period and plans are being followed through it.
Vancouver's plan is to be zero waste by twenty forty, and they even have a step-by-step website on which curious citizens can both educate themselves on what they can do and why it's useful.
This also allows for the public to be aware of the future plans and helps the Vancouver council stay on track with this initiative. Getting citizens involved and keeping them engaged in these initiatives is, is greatly important to their success.
According to Squamish's own official community plan, part of the environmental initiative was to develop a corporate program to, to become carbon neutral and support local green initiatives and businesses to offset their carbon footprint with a community carbon marketplace. And banning single-use plastics will support your plan to support and support local green businesses.
After showing as many people as we could our exhibit, which highlights the damage we create for the environment, we invited them to sign our petition, which asks to ban the planet's worst animal, straws, styrofoam, plastic grocery bags and takeout containers. We had nine hun, six hundred and ninety-five signatures from empowered kindergarten students to excited grandparents, all asking for change.
Hi, we are grade six leadership students from Squamish Elementary. We want to make a difference. We would like to avoid having our whole world covered in plastic. With that, our school, Squamish Elementary, has started our own petition to ban all single-use plastic in Squamish. We got around a hundred and fifty, uh, signatures, but we did not bring it today. So let's make a difference.
Have you ever been walking outside without seeing a single piece of plastic? It is literally everywhere. It will be difficult to get rid of it because we are so used to using it in our everyday lives. But if we all try to make a difference, we will succeed.
A couple of months ago, we did research on how plastic affects us and then made art projects to raise awareness about this issue.
I had lots of fun making my art project, even though it was a very sad topic. As I was researching, it made me very sad to find out that over one hundred thousand marine creatures die every year from entanglement in plastic and approximately one million sea birds also die because of plastic pollution. It is a terrible but very true fact and it needs to change.
Squamish Elementary supports the movement to ban single-use plastics such as plastic bags and stuff.
On the behalf of House Sound, as, we as members of House Sound Secondary's Eco Club, thank you. We hope that you will take the needed action to protect our beautiful home. Our future depends on it.
Our future depends on it.
We don't usually clap in councils anyway, but I'm really proud of all of you. And that is a good demonstration of speaking truth in power. And so I wanted to know if council has any questions for anybody that presented today. Counselor Anderson?
I wondered if any interviews or conversations have taken place with our grocery stores regarding the availability of options such as paper bags?
No, we...
You need to come to the table and answer the question. Thank you.
We had several discussions about all the disposable plastics that you can get in grocery stores and how difficult it is to get away from them. But we did not take that step to contact them. It's a great idea.
Counselor Pengeal?
Did you get a chance to do any research on some of the plant-based plastics or the supposedly biodegradable plastics? And do you know if those make any sort of difference?
Well, we looked into whether they were available, but we didn't have a lot of time to look into the chemical composition or whether they are actually a good alternative. We mostly accept cardboard and traditional...
I'll just help answer that as well. When we toured the GFL site, the site manager there, he told us that actually there is, for example, compostable plastic that they accept in their compost bins at GFL. So yeah, there is actually, there's a lot of options out there for compostable plastics.
So maybe... So this year, Squamish did adopt a zero-waste strategy. And this council, in our strategic plan, has accelerated the delivery of that because of the landfill. But maybe I'll have... So two of our staff people are here, Chris Wickham and Shannon White. Shannon is working on our zero-waste strategy. And municipalities around the province were actually following the city of Victoria very carefully because they went to court to defend their right to ban single-use plastic bags. And many of us were waiting to see what would happen there because without that precedent, knowing that it was within our power to do... Because we kept hearing things like, "Well, I'm not really sure that municipal governments can do that." We now know through that court case, the court ruled in favor of Victoria. Because we control landfills, we do have the ability to bar material from our landfills. So that was good news because there are many municipalities around the province. And that's why you're seeing action now from Vancouver and others to ban single-use plastics because we have some confidence that we will all be challenged to the court system by the plastic bag industry. Maybe I'll turn it over to Shannon and Chris to talk about single-use plastics and how we see this moving out here.
I'll just start by saying I'm blown away. And I'm supposed to say, "Wow, that was great." You know, I don't want to just sound like I'm Patty you guys on the head and saying, "Thanks for coming out." Like, "All of you did a great job." That was well researched, really nuanced, looking at the things that we have to think about, like, "What is the impact to our business?" You know, economic development in town is a really big deal. So, "What is it?" You got right in there and looked at the details. Really did your homework. Looked at what other municipalities are doing worldwide and also within British Columbia. And that was very, very impressive. And it is something that council takes very seriously. And it's made that very, very clear in their new strategic plan that's just come out. And that we, the staff, take really seriously. And we have been really focusing on zero-waste strategy and keeping things out of the landfill. And our recent change to the bylaws saying that it is now for everybody in town, including businesses, the law, the bylaw, that they have to separate out all the recyclables, keep them out of the landfill. It's a really big deal. I think you bring up a really good point in that recycling is great and important. But reducing is supposed to be the first R. And so if we don't use them to begin with, we don't have to worry about recycling them. And so I'm very excited that, in our budget, that for a little shout-out, that some folks can come down to meet council and talk about the budget in a couple days. Tomorrow night at The Ledge? In that budget is a proposal for a new staff person to come on for two years and work on that zero-waste strategy. And council was really passionate about increasing our ask. We asked for half a person. They said, "No, three-quarters of a person." So that person can not only work on the recycling, but also work on the reduction of single-use plastics within our businesses. And really working the same ways that you guys brought up. "Yeah, okay, but how much is a straw? And where can I get them? And what about the containers? And are they available?" And all those sorts of issues. So it's something that's really important. I did want to bring up that the Tower of Garbage, I think is an important clarification, that we got really lucky when last year, we switched over to Recycle BC. That all around the world, when China slammed the door and said, "We don't want your garbage anymore. This is actually really not good for us," a lot of people got really stuck. And we got stuck for a few months with no market for those plastics. And then we actually came onto a program called Recycle BC, which is a little pays...
Extended producer responsibility?
It's an extended producer responsibility program. So the people who are actually producing packaging within BC are paying to have it recycled. And so Recycle BC actually pays to take our recycling away. And they recycle it locally within BC. So right now, today, our recycling is going to the right place and is actually being recycled, which is really exciting. And I'll put a plug in as well for... I'm sure everybody here is already making use of the crinkly plastics and mesh bag and everything like that pilot program, that now, all of that kind of annoying overrap that didn't have a place to go, we can now actually recycle it down. And I don't even hardly take the garbage out anymore because I've been trying that program out. So I really encourage people to try that out as well. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, definitely. So as Chris mentioned, so we have... Actually, first, I want to back up and say thank you. Presentation almost brought tears to my eyes. I do cry really easily, but it was really... It was really... Well, he said, you know, you hit all the key points that we have to bring to council when we talk about moving forward items or policy change. And so, like Chris said, how does it impact our business? And what's the economic viability and all those pieces? Thank you very much for coming and doing this today. And then just to kind of go off of what Chris has said. So we are moving forward with this implementation of our solid waste bylaw. And in that, we are having a lot of conversations with the business community, or we're about to have more conversations with the business community. And we have integrated into our material how businesses can find alternatives. But I do think, after this, kind of thinking about it, we can flush that out a bit more and make sure that piece is really solid when we go to the business community. And this is, aside from the ban in particular, but just saying, like, we can bring that information, like, "This is your alternative to a plastic straw, and this is the price point, and this is where you can buy it." And I think that's what we need to help make a transition to alternatives to plastic easier for our business community to switch over. But that being said, council has in 2000... They have recently directed us to report with banning single-use plastics and us being staff. And so what we have been doing is just looking at how we can... Today, we've been looking at how we can integrate that into these other changes we're asking from the business community and saying... So we're right now saying to all the grocery stores and restaurants and bigger companies and businesses, saying, "You now need to compost, recycle, and have a garbage in addition to your garbage." And so that has maybe a cost to it. And then also, we're including in that conversation, and we're moving towards a single-use ban. But we don't have a date on that ban yet, which I think is something we can discuss. And in that piece also, I've been speaking with other municipalities because, as Chris mentioned, the city of Victoria's, like, and the mayor mentioned, has really kind of broke through the ice for municipalities like Squamish. We're able... I don't know if "break through the ice" is the right phrase, but...
I'm glad that they broke the ice for us.
So we now can say, yes, we can move forward in banning specific materials, which we didn't really know if we had the authority to before. And so I've been connecting with, for example, Esquimalte and Tofino, like, other kind of similar-sized municipalities who are starting down this path as well. And just seeing how they're integrating it into their policy and how they're communicating it to their community and things like that. So that's just kind of one, a few things we've been doing on this topic that maybe aren't, you know, out in the public so far. I don't know.
So... Did you ever forgotten anything? No, I don't think so. But they've come to us with a petition to ban single-use plastics. Certainly near and dear to my heart. I know we did focus on organics first, on keeping organics out of our landfill because they create the highest GHG emissions. And so, and we know there's a stream to take care of that very easily. So Shannon, is there a date? Could we... I don't want necessarily council to say it's like today or next week, but when can we move towards setting a date for banning single-use plastics? What's reasonable?
That's a great question. If you don't mind. I think that we need to... My instinct is not to set a hard date, say, "Hey, we're doing this thing," and then start talking to businesses about what the impact might be and what kind of time they might need to switch over suppliers or whatever, but to do it the other way around. So my suggestion would be that we approve the budget, hire this person. During that time, Shannon's already working on sort of what that job description looks like and some materials we'd be going out to businesses with. And then have some focused workshops with businesses to really understand what's easy, what's hard, and how long it will take them to switch over. Like, I feel like probably the answer will be plastic bags. Easy. That's something that's been part of the conversation for many years, and a lot of people have moved away from already. And we can probably flip the switch pretty quickly on that. Other things might be more difficult to source or more difficult to switch over. So it may end up being a phase ban. But I'd like to come back to council after we've had the chance to have that conversation and say, "How aggressively can we move?" And have that conversation then, if possible.
Or council might do something different. Counselor? Counselor?
I'd just like to say that the presentation, and it is something that we have been working on and working towards. And there are challenges, as Chris starts to outline there, to actually, like, you know, we can't today say that, you know, as of 3 o'clock today or whatever, you know, it's not how that successful things happen. But it's through things like you're doing and that where change really happens. And I really enjoy, even just those... They had a lot of powerful images there. And I wish I had a chance to check out the art aspect of it. I'm sure that would have been very moving. And obviously, I like how that generated the signatures as well. When you went through that, your petition, those images of the petition, I thought it was really interesting how you had the elementary school kids on there as well. And when it got down to what must be Grade 1, 2, I don't know, when it got down to those ones, it's like, wow, okay, that's a lot of responsibility we have to make sure that we look after the world that they're going to have as well. So it was very powerful. And it is something that we're working towards. But keep asking and more. The timelines will get better. Good work. Thank you.
Counselor Stoner?
My huge thanks to everybody who came out today and for the presentation. This is critically important for so many reasons. And as has been outlined by staff and other council members, there is a lot of work going on. But I do think that we can do more and we should be doing more. Specifically with the allocation of budget, which staff have referred to as additional LOE or partial LOE coming on board, that is really focused on engaging with businesses in the coming two years. I don't know if it would be unreasonable to say that we should aim to... Part of that conversation should be about the fact that there will be a ban on bags and straws. I'm going to put that up there by the end of 2019. And that could be part of their engagement strategy when they come on board. I think that there's been a lot of conversation within the media, within our community over the last few years. So I don't know if that's unreasonable from a business perspective. So I'd like to put that out there as something to consider.
Is that a motion?
I'm going to put that forward as a motion.
Ban plastic bags and straws by the end of 2019 with further single-use plastic bans being brought back to council at a future time. Very secondary for that motion? Counselor? Any discussion, counsel? So your hand, Counselor Reese?
Well, the motion wasn't on the table. I just took my hand up. Speak to it anyway. And I wanted to thank you for coming. That was a very effective presentation. And thank you for that. I think there is, and I'm sympathetic with staff to a point, that there is a process to go through. We do have to talk to stakeholders and it's just the way we make decisions. We do have to give them a chance to change suppliers and so that there's no hardship created by something like this. And so there is something, things to do. City of Victoria is proceeding based on a court decision. I can tell you, as a former lawyer, sometimes those who are appealed and they don't always stand up. And so there remains just a little bit of uncertainty around that until the province gets around to changing the legislation that we are governed by. Municipalities can't do everything. And so for the moment, we're taking the position we can do it, and we'll just see where that goes. And it certainly is one of the priorities, as you've heard, of this council. I can give you a personal story. In the '70s, I, on several occasions, made the trip by boat, sailboat, from here to Hawaii and back. And it was rare, when you got offshore, to see anything that was man-made. You saw wildlife and whales and lots of gulls and so forth, but very little man-made stuff. I've talked to friends who have made that trip more recently, and you see a lot of stuff out there. And these boats are racing from here to Hawaii, for example. And they're getting ropes wrapped around their keel and stuff like that, plastic ropes. And so you're certainly on the right track. I mean, this is absolutely the problem. There's just no debate about that. Thank you for coming. And I will, speaking of the motion, I think we might as well set something there and make sure it works.
Counselor Chris?
I'd like to hear from staff. Just how realistic is that as a timeline?
Well, there's a motion on the table, so it's difficult for staff to weigh in on the debate. So... Can you... If you can answer it... Oh, they can't really answer it because we've got a motion on the table.
Okay. So to not support the motion would not go too well. I'm not a big fan of bans, but I clearly hear the message from the students and loud and clear. And I think it is just a matter of time before we're completely phasing away from single-use plastics. I did some research on Vancouver's program and what they're up to to achieve the goal that we're talking about today. Their program seems comprehensive, and it's definitely going to take some time for Vancouver to get to where the students want us to be on this issue. So I will support the motion with the thought that if we can't make it in 2019, it's not going to be from a lack of trying because we really are working on it. And thank you for the presentation. And thank you for the presentation. It really was well researched and well put together.
Mindful of time? We're way over. Has anyone?
Just from a staff perspective, what would be the risk in it, from your opinion, in this motion? Or one that took a step further and just said, "Single-use plastics done by the end of 2018"?
Counselor? Staff have expressed their opinion that they were not planning on banning this year. So Counselor Stoner's motion is to do it in a step process with straws and plastics coming out this year. And then we would allow this new position to map out the rest of the single-use plastic ban based on their engagement with the business community. But the idea that plastic bags and straws are something that so many businesses are already doing, it's the low-hanging fruit on this one. So I don't want staff weighing in now that there's a motion on the table because their job is not to debate with council. They provided us the background. So I asked them to speak before we get a chance to comment. So the motion on the table is to ban straws and plastic bags this year with other items counted in the future years, or you don't support that motion?
Yeah, just considering amendment to step it up a notch, but I'll, I guess, be comfortable with the motion as before.
Certainly, I've heard from staff that they would like more time to do a full ban. All right. I'm excited by this motion. I think it's time has come. I look forward to a full ban on some of these plastics. I was just in London and Paris. This is a no-brainer. When big cities like that can ask their bars, restaurants, supermarkets to change. We're a town of small people with big ideas. And I know our companies that are local can do this with us. We have put this position in the budget. I think there's a lot of commitment to keep it in the budget. I think that our young people have spoken truth to power. And we can't wait. We shouldn't wait. So let's get on board and ban some plastics. Call the question. Aloud in favor? Pose. The motion carries unanimously.
Can we clap?
Thank you so much. Thank you for your work. And thank you for coming to speak to us today. I really appreciate it. Give yourselves all a pat on the back. You did great.